Town meeting representatives, please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Town meeting reps, please make sure you get your clickers, check in with your precinct chairs. Make sure they mark your present. Receive your clicker and take your seats, please. Okay, everybody, please be seated. All town meeting reps. Oh, yeah, I'm also have been reminded to please silence your phone. Please silence your phone this evening, okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday. I believe, yeah, May 22nd. I now call to order the sixth session, yes, the sixth, of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting for the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street in Stoughton. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our national flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. All right, I'm just looking at the table to my left, I think another member is here from the town hall, Kelly Johnson. Here's Kelly. Welcome, Kelly Johnson. All right, and I believe everybody's the same over here, any changes? Nope, everybody's the same. All right. Back in May 6th, on Monday, we introduced all the town officials, so nobody has changed. Any town meeting reps have not been sworn in? I believe everybody should have been sworn in by now, but there's always sometimes one, two people that might have missed a few meetings. Now's the time to raise your hand to get sworn in. Seeing none. Next, we're gonna check attendance to whether, to make sure we have a quorum to proceed with our annual town meeting. I gotta ask these precinct chair for the number of town meeting reps present in their precinct. First off is Precinct 1, Juan Fox. 10, Precinct 1. George Stalinski, Precinct 2.
16.
16, Precinct 2. Matt Callis, Precinct 3.
12.
12, Precinct 3. Julie Gito, Precinct 4.
19.
19, Precinct 4. Precinct 5?
10.
10, Precinct 5. Bob Kirby, Precinct 6. 11, Precinct 6. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7. 13, Precinct 7. And David Sheehan, Precinct 8.
12.
12, Precinct 8. Okay, stand by for the tally. All right, this evening, Acting Town Clerk Samantha Rego tells me there's 103 town meeting reps present. 85 is considered a quorum. I declare a quorum is present. As usual, our first order of business is to test our clickers, make sure they're all working, so everybody can have their vote recorded. Are we ready to do it? Please press 1, 2, or 3 on your clicker. And if you don't think they work, then please come down front and see Samantha Rego. That'll be a $10 deposit from each of you. Okay, while we're waiting, let me just mention that procedural motions were moved and voted back on Monday, May 6th, and they do remain in effect. A few other notes. By my count, we have 24 articles remaining in our warrant book. So, let's see, oh, the light's dimming. Atmosphere, yes. Please dim the lights. All right, we have 24 articles remaining. We have 24 articles remaining. We need to get at least through 12 this evening to get through half. Hopefully, we get through more. I can have everybody's attention, please. So I ask you, the town meeting reps, since it's your meeting, that you need to work with me to get at least 12 or 13 articles completed this evening, more if possible. That means ask as few questions as possible. If a speaker has already provided a positive comment, if you've provided positive comments and they support the motion and you agree, please refrain from taking the microphone, because you'd be saying the same thing. So I ask you to please reduce the number of comments if you can. Also, if a speaker has already provided a negative comment and they don't support the motion and you agree, please refrain from taking the microphone and saying the same thing. This process on both sides of the aisle, I call it both sides, positive and negative, will save us a lot of time this evening. And I'm also gonna move you along, so if you do stray from the article at hand, I'm gonna galve you right away. I ask you to take a seat. All right, because there's no more straying from the article, stay on point, stay germane to the article, or the motion, I should say. And we're just gonna move it along this evening. We will have to come back, I don't think we're gonna get through all 24 articles this evening. We'll have to come back next Wednesday after Memorial Day. I know nobody is gonna enjoy that. But the date is May 29th, Wednesday, May 29th, will be our seventh session. Are we ready? No. Okay, that's okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chat.
Hi, Chuck Collins, Precinct 1. Could you turn up your mic a little bit?
You're not hearing it well?
I'm not, I'm not sure about other people.
Is everybody hearing me okay? Okay, now you can, okay, I'll make sure I speak up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, for the information. Well, I'd rather just give it a minute. All right, actually, if you don't mind, I'll proceed a little bit. We have, if I had to ask, we have a special announcement from Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. Cynthia, you wanna take the microphone?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3, this is actually a point of personal privilege, thank you, Mr. Moderator. At our last session, I misspoke and I said that this body had not approved any senior housing. A longtime member reminded me that we did, in fact, years ago, approve a housing authority plan to turn Swan Tavern into senior housing. That project did fall through. To any members who were here then and who voted in favor of that project, I maligned you and I apologize. I should have kept my mouth shut. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walsh, for your comments. Also, we have a special personal point of privilege from John Anzavino, Precinct 4. Mr. Anzavino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be very brief, I know we have a lot to do. As a number of you may know, this is my final year, based on the charter, it's my ninth year, I'm done on the Finance Committee. I wanna thank the chairman for all his help. I wanna thank my precinct for putting me in for nine years, and I'll get you back. And it's been a privilege serving in this capacity for this body, and I appreciate you putting up with me for all those years. And I wanna thank a former colleague from the Selectmen, or now known as the Select Board, and that's Ms. Cynthia Walsh. She presented me the first night with just a couple of little... You cut me off, but, and I just wanted to personally thank you for that publicly, it was very much appreciated. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, John Anzavino, for your service to the Finance Committee and to town meeting. All right. Think I covered all the points to talk about. All right, this evening, per the procedural motions, it stated number 5, that we're gonna hear on May 22nd. Article 32, Police Station Expansion and Renovation Design. That appears on page 57. I do know there's a couple of articles on, I should say, motions on the table, we'll get to those a little later. I'd like to start with Article 32, it appears on page 57 in the warrant books. And I believe Mr. Gito is gonna make the motion. Actually, I should say, let me just, Finance Committee... Yeah, usually it comes, if the Finance Committee has made a recommendation that's positive, it usually comes from the Finance Committee. Is that okay? Okay, you're gonna amend that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Von Anokian, please make the motion.
That the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the preparation of design documents, thematic documents, for the construction, equipping, and furnishing, and expansion, and renovation of the existing police station, located at 26 Rose Street, assesses property IDs 541750, including, not limited to, professional engineering, architectural, and owner's project manager services, plans for demolition and removal of the existing buildings, all portions there, preparation, including any required testing and renovations, and all other incidental and related expenses, and as funding, therefore $300,000 be transferred from free cap.
Second!
Second, I'll take it from Mr. Anzavino. All right, could we double-check his microphone again, because it's... What's that, Kevin? Okay, thank you, we got a second one? Okay, very good, thank you very much. All right, it's been moved and seconded by John Anzavino, can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to recommend the motion for Article 32 as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Municipal Operations Report, please.
Municipal Operations voted 6 to 0 to approve Article 32.
Okay, thank you. All right, before we hear the presentation, this is one of those, we have an amended motion on this that exempts this motion from the Sunset Clause. Just wanna make sure I'm following proper procedure here. Mr. Gito, I recognize you for that amended motion. Press the button.
I would like to amend Article 32 by adding at the end of the last sentence, a new sentence, exempt from Article 70, Annual Town Meeting of May 1st, 2023 Sunset Bi-Lot.
Second, who seconded that? I think Eric Coleman, sorry. It just, the voices flow this way, one went this way, one went that way. I'm just trying to catch one, okay, thank you. Seconded by Eric Coleman, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any... Are we ready to vote on this? I'm just gonna ask for a voice vote, just trying to move this whole thing along. All right, all those in favor to put this amended motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion is now on the floor and should be up on the screen before us. I see that, it is on the screen. The presentation tonight is provided by Chief McNamara. Chief?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time. Last fall, we had an article that was presented to this body and there were a number of comments that was loud and clear from this body that you recognize the needs that the Stoughton Police Department currently do not fill the needs for our department, so we have put this article together for a feasibility study. Many of you in this room know that we were a part of the Public Safety Building feasibility in 2018, 2019, and so this money would expand on that and update that project. So we will be looking to go through a brief project phases, the proposed scope of services, the needs, some of the needs now and for the future for the Police Department, and we'll give you some of our goals, outcomes, and costs. That's what the presentation will fulfill tonight. In 2019, we're hoping to bring to this fall, after this feasibility study, if approved by this body, what we would need going forward. So you can see in the second slide, it's a little bit of a timeline for you, if you didn't see it on the virtual table, that we'd like to be in front of this body again in the fall with an updated study and the costs that we would need to move the project forward. At that fall meeting, we would then look for construction documents and bidding if it's approved. So the project phases would be a robust, Phase 1, which would be a robust updating the feasibility study, concept designs, and any estimated cost at that point for the fall town meeting. And then if approved, going forward, Stage 2, Phase 2 would be schematic design, construction documents, bidding, and any contracts that we would award, and then construction moving forward in the next phase, which would be in 2026. So we have participated in a feasibility study back in 2018 and 2019. Those needs were stopped for the Police Department and the Police Department was asked to step aside, and we did, for the needs of the Fire Department, which were much greater than the Police Department at that time. I agreed with it then, most of my department would say that they agree with it as well. We didn't have a 100-year-old building, but we do have a building that does not fit the needs for our current department. Many of you will, may remember when they remodeled the building in 19, mid-1990s, they started the project in the beginning of it, 1995, where they were doing the same things that we're doing right now. But they didn't build for the future, so they used the existing old police station foundation and built around that. They did not put infrastructure in the building on 26 Rose Street to build a second floor, to utilize a second floor, all on that station, during the feasibility study in 2019, was discovered that we could never put a station, a second floor on the station right now. So the feasibility for what we need for the future of our department is necessary, and I know $300,000 is a lot of money, but we are asking for this in order to fulfill the needs of our department for the Town of Stoughton. Many of the things that we learned during the feasibility study in 2019, when we were looking for a public safety building, was there was no land in the Town of Stoughton for us. We had looked at Fano Drive and went pretty far with that study, and that became no longer a viable property for us. We do like the 26 Rose Street location, was centrally located. We feel as though that's a good aspect for the Town of Stoughton, so we wanna make sure that if we can expand at 26 Rose Street, that the study that we would need is topographical studies, land study. Let the engineer and Mark talk a little bit more about that if he wants to, but we need to know whether or not we can utilize the location to build an addition on 26 Rose Street. So that's some of what we would be doing in the feasibility study. We would look to see if we need land, there is, many of you may know, there's an apartment building across the street from the police station that has a lot that's behind the municipal lot on Rose Street. Would there be an ability to work with that landowner to do a land swap? We're trying to look at every option possible in order to improve the police station with the land and the property that we have next door on Rose Street. The study would need to be updated, it's been, policing has changed in the last five or six years from the time we did that feasibility study. Just one example of that is, we no longer house dispatch in the police station. So when we originally looked at it, we were looking at the dispatch staying in the station. We no longer have that need, but we have other needs. So the other needs are, we're currently in the process of building out, embedding social workers within the Police Department. That was something that we did not think about and we did not anticipate in 2019. That is in the process, we have a grant for that, we will be hiring for that in the near future, and from other Police Department experiences, that is something that has been a big demand and is gonna add services, and the unique services would be the community coming into the station with that need, with the social worker. So we will be looking to update our current needs assessment for our current Police Department and the future of our Police Department. Go to the next slide, Sam. So why do we need it? I think many of you that have maybe came in 2018 and toured the police station and saw some of the needs. We have repaired the roof. I've been the chief for eight years, and I think we've repaired it twice, if not three times, and it still leaks to this day. We have a foundation that leaks. Water comes in still in the small area that we do have in the foundation. We have a generator that is in the police station, it's in the basement of the police station. I don't necessarily think that that's where we wanna keep it, since if you look at what happened over at the Brockton Hospital, that was part of the problem that caused that. And additional needs for the station are locker rooms, facilities. We currently don't have enough lockers for the, in the male locker room, and in the female locker room, we are doing a small addition, which we didn't add any space. Within the room, we just moved a sink in order to add five lockers, for a total of 15 lockers within the station. So those are some of the needs for the department. In the 2019 feasibility study, it was determined that we are 18,000 square feet deficient in the current building for the needs of our department. And so that's what we'll be continuing with the needs assessment. Police Department, you know, in order to be a modern police station, we've had significant changes with IT and security features, and we would need to be updating that. We have data storage that's coming in the near future, when we get body cameras. We have evidence storage issues. There are just an immense amount of things that we wanna move to define in this feasibility study. I think I missed one of the slides, but I don't wanna necessarily read from the slides. I think you can read them while they're just provided for you in the virtual table. So I'll wrap up my presentation in that we want a Police Department that exists in the downtown, we hope to keep it there. We wanna utilize the existing facility and add on to it and provide the best police services that we can for our community, create a safe environment for the police station and for our community and the town needs, verify the current site and accommodate the needs illustrated in the possible options, design, and the facility and infrastructure for the future, which unfortunately was not, thought that our town would be this big back when we did the remodel in 1998, and generate a project options with overall project cost estimates at the end of the feasibility study. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief McNamara. Okay, we're in the period of technical questions. Please rise and I'll acknowledge you. First up is Jim Garren.
Jim Garren, Precinct 6. Are you going to be able to continue the police functions at that site during demolition and construction?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead.
So in the feasibility stage, we would not, that would all come out in the end result of the feasibility, but that, the goal would be yes, because as you are aware, when we did the remodel in 98, we were relocated. So that will all be a part of the cost estimates.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up, I believe, is Steve Wilkinson, please identify yourself in your precinct.
Steve Wilkinson, Precinct 4. I'm wondering if we've got a ballpark idea of what it will cost to do this?
So I have Taylor McDonald here from Palmeroy and Associates to assist with answering those questions.
Hi, good evening, Taylor McDonald from Palmeroy Associates. Could I just ask for clarification, a cost to do the feasibility study or the entire project?
The entire project.
Okay, great question. And actually, at this time, I think it would be a disservice to try to comment on that. That is the reason for the feasibility study. We did actually discuss that, you know, leading up to tonight, and the intricacies with this project being on, with an existing building there, being able to work in the parking needs of the station, the existing site, working around that, and the operations, you know, that's really the biggest, you know, be the biggest outcome or goal of this feasibility study that we're working on. So really, to throw out a number for the entire project, we felt wouldn't be fair to the town or to the design team to try to put a number at a later date. So when we come back with the feasibility study, we'll have actually an estimated cost for the entire project.
Do we get a second one?
Sure, one more.
Is, considering what was said, is simply replacing the building with a new building that maybe is two stories, as was originally hoped for, something that will be considered?
I'm just gonna let the design team speak on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don Walter, Principal with Dorn Whittier Architects. The answer is yes, we will be looking at all possibilities for solutions to the, for the police station, whether it be renovations and additions, new, we even talked about, because of the parking issue, maybe a parking structure out there. So there are a lot of, a lot of possibilities out there and quite frankly, not a lot of room, so it'll be a pretty detailed study.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Juan Fox, please identify yourself in your precinct.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. Is the ceiling to the cost of this part of the design parameters? And if so, what is it?
Yeah, at this time, there is no ceiling, there is, the design, the outcome of the study won't be a final... Let me back up. So we really won't even know what that ceiling is or what the design looks like until we start and get into the feasibility study itself. So right now, I'm sorry, there's, was your question, I'm kinda confused, I guess. Is your question, is there a ceiling to the design cost for this phase? Or a cost, total cost for the construction, for the total project?
For the project, it could be 50 million, could be 200 million, could be anything, as a limit to the, to the design. So that's, I was expecting a possibility, you have a limit in that way.
At this time, yeah, the feasibility study will tell us where this comes out. It's gonna be designed for the program that the police station needs, and then a cost estimate will be provided based on that program for the needs of the station.
You're all set, thank you very much, thank you both. Next up is David Laurie. Please identify yourself in your precinct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct 6, through you. I was wondering if there, on any of the three phases, are there any state or federal grants available to offset some of the cost?
If anybody can answer that for us?
At this time, no, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Paul Demuse, please identify yourself in your precinct.
Paul Demuse, Precinct...
Paul Demuse, precinct two. In the presentation, I saw you're deficient by 18,000 square feet. That's a, that's a big number. What's the square foot of the existing facility?
So the existing facility is 24,000 square feet, and so we're projecting a 32,000 square foot facility. But keep in mind, that study was done over five years ago now, and we're going to be revisiting the program as, as part of the study because policing has changed even in that what seems to be a short amount of time. So we don't know exactly where that's going to fall, but the study will, will tell us what the program needs are.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Arnold Feinberg. Please identify yourself.
Arnie Feinberg, precinct six. Chief McNamara mentioned that in the eight years she was there, that they had two roof repairs and a leaky basement. Is the design for the new facility going to have the same roof design that's leaking now?
Absolutely not.
And do we still have the same vendor repairing the police station for those leaks?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Roberta Habbak.
Roberta Habbak, precinct seven. When the safety building was going to be done, the public safety building, are any of the requirements for the police station at that, that time be able to be brought forward to this project? Are you starting from scratch?
Yeah, all the existing information that was done back in 2018, 19, the design team is going to be able to utilize that information and basically get a jump start on the project. So it's, it's all good information that they are using now.
Good to know, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Suez, do you have a question?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so you're getting up, okay, we're going to move on to pro and con debate. Any comments? Please rise, get in line. I see Robert Cohn first.
When that police station opened.
Please state your name and precinct.
My name is Robert Cohn, precinct five. I remember that station the day it opened. The question, Mr. Farrington was here, the question is, did we make room for expansion? The building was obsolete, leaking roof the day that place opened. There was no thought ever put into it. It's not true? Of course it's true. If you looked at the detective room, I don't even know how they squeeze in there. The place right now is a dump, and it's time to fix it and make it to a police station the way it is.
Mr. Cohn, Mr. Cohn.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're talking about the article which is.
I'm telling you, I'm giving you my opinion.
Well, but you should focus on germane to the feasibility study itself, not the old building.
Thank you.
Just trying to remind.
I'm all done. I hope you please pass this bill and put them in its right century because they're in the caveman century now.
Thank you very much. Next up is Matthew Callis.
Matthew Callis, precinct three. I think we have a lot of spending fatigue here, and I don't question the, the need the police department has. I just want to make sure as a body, we think this through in that if we're not willing to put forward the 10 or 100 million, whatever it is, next year, then maybe this isn't the time to do the feasibility study. So I guess I would caution us, if we want to spend the money next year, then let's approve this, and if we don't want to spend the money next year, maybe we shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Peter Ventresko.
Peter Ventresko, precinct eight. As far as the existing building leaking, they have chemicals out there today that they can pump into the ground and seal the leaks. I'll just say that. But this new police station is long, long overdue, and all the different buildings, we, library and schools and everything else, we built and a fire station. These people deserve a new station. I think we should give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elliot Hanson.
Gee, it's working today. Elliot Hanson, precinct one. You know, in an odd sort of way, the old police station we had was an absolute mess and a feasibility or some other study that was not done properly. This time, at least now, we can learn from all our mistakes in the other building, and the money spent on a good feasibility with all options open is a marvelous idea. And so I want to thank all those that are going to do the feasibility study. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Becca Oxton.
Becca Marks, precinct seven. Move the question.
Okay, I'm going to take that on faith. We'll just leave it up to the town meeting reps if they want to move the question. Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Give me one second. I'll do by voice vote. Needs are two thirds. If there's any doubt, we'll have to go to the clickers. All right, all those who want to move the question means cut off debate. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose.
Go.
Okay, I believe the ayes have it, so.
What if I just make a point of order and let fly anywhere? I mean, we have some of that going on in here, you know?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, point of order?
Making a.
Never mind. I just wanted to comment on this because this is long overdue. This is nothing but a study.
Thank you. You're all just in.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Did you want to do a summary, Chief? Two or three minutes?
Yes, I'll do a brief summary. We appreciate your time and we appreciate your vote on this matter. It's $300,000 for a feasibility study. That's what we're asking for, for today. This is a project that, as the previous speaker was talking about, this has been going on for a number of years. I've been in front of this body a number of times for different aspects of it or for different money in order to repair the current building that we're in. And I, I just urge you to please support this, this article and vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion should be up. Okay, you ready to vote? Please vote now. Simple majority. 98 yes, 12 no, 7 abstentions. I declare that a vote. Thank you all for voting. Let's move on. Let's go back to, I believe, I'd like to have a motion to take Article 24 off the table.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, by voice vote, to simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Okay, clearly unanimous. All right, that appears on page 51 in the Warren books. 51. Is it 50? 51. Page 51. Article 24, sewer capital inflow and infiltration. Also known as I and I. Thank you. All right, last Monday, we had this amended motion on the floor. Okay, now I believe we have another amended motion that could be presented. I'll have the town council explain.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, when we tabled Article 24 at the conclusion of Monday night, the intention, which I think was expressed to the meeting, was that we would try to work with other town officials and draft a sort of full form, if you will, substitute motion that included additional language that we usually employ for borrowing articles. So the motion, as amended, as you can see, changed this from a cash to a borrowing article, but there was some additional language that bond council would want to see in order to approve this. So what we did between Monday night and today was include the additional language. So that's what you see in front of you. It doesn't change the intent, it just adds additional language that bond council is going to want to see when it gets transmitted to them if this is ultimately approved by this meeting. So currently, you have this motion to amend on the floor. Right, we left off on that, but it wasn't voted. And so, Mr. Moderator, you could handle this in one of two ways. If the maker of the motion is willing to withdraw it, and the meeting is okay with that, we could then proceed with the motion to amend, which is the new one that we've printed and is up on the town meeting virtual table. The other alternative, a little bit more complicated, bear with me, is to vote down this motion to amend, removing it from the floor, and then someone else can make a new motion to amend. You see the difference? So either this can be withdrawn, if we're not going to proceed on this one, or we could vote it down. And then someone could make a new motion to amend with the updated language that we put on the virtual table. You follow that?
I do follow, Mr. Town Council. There was two, borrowing and repaid was a, another amendment within that amendment. Do we, do we need both people that made those amendments?
No, just dealing with this one.
Okay, the primary maker of this amendment?
Yes.
I think that was.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, in fact. She's identified herself.
Peck Holburn, precinct four. I can't stand the rejection, so I make a motion that we withdraw this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is, is there a second? Second by Carolyn Campbell. Okay, by simple majority, you have a point of order? You have to rise to the microphone and state your point of order, please. We're just trying to move it along.
I believe you can't. It's working? Oh, good. I don't believe you can dismiss the article. I think you should.
It's not being dismissed, it's being withdrawn.
It shouldn't be withdrawn, it should be dismissed. It's just a point of order because if it's withdrawn, it can be submitted again. If you dismiss it, it's dead.
Right, we're only talking about this amendment that's on the screen to withdraw it. All right, all those, by voice vote, all those in favor to withdraw this article that you see on the screen, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. It's unanimous. All right, now I ask for another motion. Who would like to make that, Mr. Jito, or? Oh, well, I meant to say the amendment. All right, can't withdraw an article. Oh, can I get clarification to the body, Mr. Town Council? If I misstated, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, what I heard was that the maker of the motion to amend was willing to withdraw for reasons stated. Town meeting accepted that request that the proposed motion to amend be withdrawn, and it has been withdrawn. So now we're back to the, the original motion that had been on the floor, the suggestion by Selectman Carrero that, I think someone may have stated the article was withdrawn. Articles can't be withdrawn, only motions can. Town meeting acts on the motions. And so I believe the intent was clear that the motion to withdraw applied to the amendment that the speaker had in fact herself made. So I'm fine with you proceeding, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you for clarity. Mr. Kaby, you going to make the motion?
I would love to make an amended motion.
The amended motion.
This is the one that's, I knew there's a couple of versions. Right now, this is the one that was put in the virtual table as being under the town manager.
Yes, May 21st.
That's what we're expecting, okay.
Yes, May 21st.
So then I propose the following motion, that the town vote to appropriate $400,000 to continue improving the sewer system and reduce infiltration and inflow of groundwater and water from rain leaders or some pumps, but not limited to as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation, and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $400,000 and to issue bonds or notes therefore pursuant to Chapter 40 and/or Chapter 29(c) of the general laws or any other enabling authority. And further, although this bond and these bonds and notes will be considered general obligations of the town, the debt service on these obligations is intended to be repaid by the sewer enterprise fund, and this is exempt from Article 70, Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023 sunset bylaw.
Seconded by Peck Holburn. Okay, this is an amendment to the main motion. So we're going to do by voice vote. I don't see anybody standing up for discussion or argument. So by voice vote, all those in favor of putting the amendment to the main motion that you just heard by Steve Kaby, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Okay, now we'll be discussing the main motion as amended. And let's just see if it's on the screen. It's coming up on the screen. Just give her a moment here, there's lots of, if you've been on the virtual table, we have many, many motions out there, amended motions. Very busy.
Mr. Moderator, point of interest?
Point of interest?
A clarification.
Point of clarification?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. I'm glad that we're putting the number of amendments attached to these amendments. Thank you.
I'll ask for guidance from the town council when he gets back. I had a question from the body. Should we be numbering the amendments like number three? Is there a need to do that? Town council? I'll defer to you.
So, Mr. Moderator, I would actually defer to the clerk's office, he's going to be taking the minutes of town meeting. We typically don't number them, and if the record of the meeting as reflected in the minutes is accurate, it should be clear the order in which they were made and voted.
So they are dated, and they do say who submitted by. And they're all on the virtual table for all to see. But thank you very much, Ms. Murphy, for your recommendation. If the clerk's office wants to do that, I'm fine with that too, whatever's easier for them. Yes, that is correct. Okay, do we have a presentation? Mr. McDonald, do we have that? Do we need to go? Yeah, we made it. All right, no problem. Forgive me, forgive me. Any debate on this? Okay, seeing no debate? Okay, okay, this is required because it's borrowing now. It needs a two thirds vote. So is it, are we ready to go? Please vote now. One, two, or three? Please wait until we get the vote in. Okay, it's clearly two thirds. Let me announce the vote. One 12 yes, two no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. Thank you all for voting. There was some discussion here. We did vote on the amendment, the main amendment, main motion as amended, I should say. Get that out. All right, we're going to turn to Article 25, and that's on page 52, and that's water and sewer capital. We're going to put the main, we're going to put the motion from the book on the table first, and then we'll go to the amended motion that has a sunset clause. All right, Mr. Von Anokian, please, motion?
That the town vote to appropriate $586,000 to design, permit, install, and construct, and purchase capital improvement items and projects for the water and sewer departments always set forth in the chart below, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $586,000 and to issue bonds and notes therefore pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority. And further, although these bonds and notes will be considered general obligations of the town, the debt service on these obligations is intended to be repaid by the water and sewer enterprise funds. Sewer Enterprise Funds. Item one, new jet truck, $350,000. Item two, two F-250 work trucks with plows, $154,000 in replacements. Item three, one new F-250 work truck with plow, $82,000.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 2 to recommend the motion for Article 25 as written in the warrant.
Thank you, can I have Municipal Operations report, please?
Municipal Operations voted 6 to 0 to approve Article 25.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we hear the presentation, I'd like to see if we can get the amended motion on the floor. And this is Article 25. I believe, Mr. Kaby, you gonna make that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We should make the following amended motion, that the main motion as it is, as already been read, be amended to include at the end the following sentence: exempt from Article 70, Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023, sunset bylaw.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Who seconded it? Carolyn Campbell? Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Okay, by voice vote, all right, by voice vote, I don't see anybody rising for discussion to accept this. Just majority. All those in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion's been accepted. So now we have the main motion as amended, and we're ready for the presentation. Mr. McNulty, please identify yourself to the body.
Phil McNulty, Water and Sewer Superintendent. So most of the information is in, in the second book is backup, but I'll briefly outline the articles here. For item one, the jet truck, the jet truck is used in the town sewer system and sometimes the drainage system to clear pipes of obstructions and clogs. The jet truck also works hand in hand with the closed circuit TV camera truck to investigate conditions of sewer pipes and identifying leaks as part of the II program. The current jet truck is 26 years old, is very hard worked and has reached its useful life at this point. It's a critical part of maintaining the sewer system and is basically a first responder to emergency sewer backups and clogs. So the new, the new jet truck is, is basically the same size and has the same abilities as the existing truck, it's just the old one is starting to fail us and has needed repairs in recent years. That's it.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. McNulty. All right, now it's time for technical questions. Excuse me? The question, well, do you want to rise to the microphone with your question?
Should I continue with the other items?
If you could, yeah.
So item two is the replacement of two existing F-250 diesel trucks. Each has about 100,000 miles and 2014s. They have a lot of issues with diesel regeneration, and they're basically in the shop at this point more than they're on the road. So in accordance with the town's vehicle replacement policy, we're planning on trading those in for new. The last item, the, item three is basically another F-250 truck with a plow. Just because we have more employees and vehicles in terms of day-to-day and snow plowing activities, we're short a vehicle. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNulty, for your additional presentation. Okay, now it's time for technical questions. Anybody? Seeing, we have one?
Yes, sir. George Zalinski, Precinct Two. In looking at item two, you're replacing two F-250 work trucks with plows for $154,000, $77,000 each, but right below that, you're buying another one for $82,000. Are you saying that we're gonna be getting in enough money to cover the difference between what we're trading in to offset that price?
I think mathematically, the trade-ins are incorporated into item two as opposed to not item three.
So we're gonna get about $10,000 for those two trucks, right?
I think on the, the quote we have now is a fairly low sight unseen quote of around $3,000, but we think we can do better with that, and if we don't, we'll go with auction.
Thank you. Anybody else? Paul Bellevue? Please state your name and your precinct when you get to the microphone.
Paul Bellevue, Precinct Three. My only question is, it says these obligations is intended to be repaid by the Water and Sewer Enterprise. So why doesn't it just say will be paid? And who, if you don't pay it, why wouldn't you not be able to pay it? And who is gonna pay it if you can't pay it?
Can anybody address that? Is Zalinski our financial director?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, to the body. With these types of borrowings, it does come from the enterprise funds, and you do want, you can either say will be or be intended to be paid by, so either language works appropriately in this situation.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else seeing none? Let's move on to pro and con debate. Please go to the microphones, okay? Mr. Collins, please identify yourself.
Hi, Chuck Collins, Precinct One. Sorry. I'm in favor of the jet truck, but I'm not in favor of the two F-250 work trucks, diesel, 100,000 miles, I mean, that's nothing for a diesel truck. And a new one, F-250 work truck with a plow for $82,000? No way, no way. I see deep, the water department trucks parked on side streets during the day, not working, and superintendent said at one time when I brought it up, that they're on call. Well, it's not that far from DPW to anywhere in this town where you can drive your own vehicle, get mileage if you have to, and get the truck and go out and take care of the service. I, I just, and I saw these trucks down at the water department, and personally, they look better than my old truck. So I'm definitely against this, but I am in favor of the jet truck, because I've seen it at work, but I'm against the new vehicles with the plows, you know, sitting in people's driveways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? We're gonna move right along if I don't see anybody. Seeing no one? All right. Mr. McNulty, would you like to do a quick summary?
Just, I wouldn't be here if they're not needed, so, that's as simple as that.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a borrowing article, so we need a two-thirds vote. All right, let me just make sure it's ready to go. We ready? Please vote now, one, two, or three. All right, motion passes. 96 yes, 17 no, one abstention. I declare that a vote, we're gonna move right on, right along here. Okay, Article 26 is already completed back on May 15th, and we're gonna move to Article 27, Cedar Hill Capital. That appears in your books on page 54. Please turn to page 54.
Did you want me to read it?
Excuse me?
Did you want me to read it?
I can't hear you, what? Uh, just one second, please.
Sorry.
Let myself get there too, get ready. Okay, I just wanna say, this again is a motion, amended motion that'll be coming up with a sunset clause. All right, motion by Mr. Bonanocian, please.
At the town, should I use the other mic? I'll just read it. At the town vote to appropriate and fund for retained earnings, $88,000 to design, permit, install, and construct, and purchase capital improvements, projects, and items for the Cedar Hill Golf Course always set forth in the chart below. Item one, cotton equipment storage tent, $30,000. Item two, cost renovations, $40,000. Item three, greens roller, $18,000.
Okay, motion, Article 27 has been moved and seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to recommend the motion for Article 27 as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Can I have Municipal Operations report?
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to 1 to approve Article 27. I abstained. I am a member of the Cedar Hill Golf Course Operations Committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is the amended motion that we're gonna need to put up first, and this is Article 27. Miss, I see the list is, Mr. McCrisky, if anybody else would like to read that amended motion? Mr. Jito, I recognize you.
I would amend the motion to add at the end, after transfer from, to add exempt from Article 70, Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023, sunset bylaw.
Okay, I need a second. Cynthia Walsh checking that? Thank you. Give me a moment here. Okay, am I asked again for any debate? I see no debate, so I gotta ask for acceptance by voice vote, and I need two-thirds. I'm sorry, just an amendment, simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous, thank you all very much. Victor, we're gonna have the presentation, please identify yourself to the body.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Victor Berusa, Superintendent of Cedar Hill Golf Course. So we have three items on the docket, you can see all the backup that's in the, in the book, but just a very brief description, cart storage and equipment tent, pretty self-explanatory. We have more equipment than can fit in the basement and the current storage area, so we'd like to make sure that our new equipment and future equipment, golf carts, all stay out of the elements and clean. Golf course renovations, as you can see, what we've done over the past couple of years and the numbers, the way they've changed, has been all based upon the investment that we've made to improve the playing surface and the experience there, and it is paying even dividends. The last one is a greens roller. Greens roller is to maintain the playing surface, to help level the greens due to frost heaves. It will help minimize disease, which also helps with chemical intervention, it minimizes the amount of chemical intervention that we have to do, so all positive things. It should be something, something that's done on a weekly basis. Right now, we do have one, but the clutch is gone, we have to kind of push it across the greens, so it's time for a new one. Any questions, I'll be here to answer.
Okay, thank you, Victor, for your presentation. All right, time for technical questions, is anybody? Erica, you rising for a technical question?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. I see in Book Two, I don't know if this is the same art, the same tent, oh, sorry about that, on page 180, it lists a Gold Mountain Double Trust Storage Shelter for the price of $18,000. Is this the same thing that is $30,000?
That is, yes, that is the tent, but it's also the pad that it's gonna go on, it's the entire project, that's what the, that tent is part of that project.
So it's not a tent, it's a building, right?
It's a temporary structure, it's a steel structure with a fabric, fabric covering on it.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, it's time for pro and con debate or comments, anybody? Seeing none? Victor, would you like to do a quick summary? It's up to you.
That's it, thanks for all your support over the time, and I hope you vote for it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Victor. Okay, let's have it up on the screen, are we ready to vote? Yes, please vote now. Okay, simple majority.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 27, motion passes, one on one yes, 11 no, three abstentions, I declare that a vote, and we're gonna move on. All right, Article 28, Town Pond Management Program, appears on page 55. This did appear in the consent agenda, but it was held, and we hearing it right now. So this also has an amended motion with a sunset clause, we'll get to that. So I'm gonna ask Bonanocian for the proposed motion, please.
That the town vote to appropriate $67,000 for the continuation of the town of Stoughton's townwide pond management program to include engineering, consulting, studies, and ongoing treatment to control exotic and invasive aquatic vegetation in our town ponds, including all incidental and related expenses, and that to meet this appropriation, $67,000 be transferred from free cash.
Second by John Anzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 2 to recommend the motion for Article 28 as written in the warrant.
Thank you, can I have Municipal Operations report?
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to 1 to approve Article 28. Michael Haran abstained due to being a member of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much, okay. As I mentioned, this is also the amended motion with a sunset clause. Let me just take a look at my list here. Do we have someone that, Lou Jito, can you make that motion, the amended motion, please?
As, as in the other motions, I would add at the end exempt from Article 70, Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023, sunset bylaw.
Is there a second? Second by Joe Scardino, thank you very much. Okay, again, I don't see anybody rising for a debate, so I'm gonna ask to accept this amended motion to the main motion by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, can we have a presentation, please? This is Article 28, and...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Jerry?
You prepared to make a short presentation?
Sure, please identify yourself to the body.
Jerry McDonnell, Precinct Four, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. This article is a continuation of the pond management program that we have had in place for, since 2016. It's expanded across the whole town as far as publicly owned ponds that we're managing and controlling weeds. It's been very successful from our standpoint and well received by the citizens, and this is just a continuation to keep the ponds clear. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McDonnell, for your presentation. This was held by Pat Colburn. Pat, I wanna have...
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. The only reason I held this is because it had the amended motion, and I was concerned that if it went through a consent agenda, then it would go with the original motion, and the amended motion would never be heard. So I have nothing wrong with the article, I'm voting for it, but that was what my concern was. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Pat. Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Last year at town meeting, engineering brought up the idea of doubling this money and only coming back once every two years. Did that thought fall by the wayside?
I'm not really sure, I think there's been, I think Mark is rising to address that. I think hopefully next year, we might be organized enough to try to get a longer term article, multi-year, but I'll let, I'll let Mark answer that.
Thank you very much. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer. I appreciate the question, thank you. You're right, that was going to be the plan, have a multi-year funding and contract year by year. This year, we knew we had some possible, you know, borrowing budgetary issues, so we went with the one year for this year. Next year, we may come back with multiple years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you both. Eric Coleman?
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. In the Book Two on page 190, Woods Pond is listed... In the book two on page one ninety, uh, Woods Pond is listed, but there's no date of treatment. Is Woods Pond going to be treated?
If we have somebody answer that, it'd be great.
Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer. Thanks for the question, Eric. Um, to answer your question, uh, we will be looking at Woods Pond, not treating it this year. It'll be part of our study and evaluation. Uh, we'll be looking to be treating it for the following years.
Thank you. Okay, thank you both. Anybody else? Jim Garren?
Jim Garren, precinct six. Uh, in the, uh, backup information for this thing here, the, uh, project proposal says that there, um, there should be a post-treatment inspection included. Is it going to be included?
I believe they always do the post-treatment inspections.
Okay, I just said should, and, and there was a couple shoulds in there, and that's, uh, that's what I'm asking about. So it looked like options to me. I didn't know whether you accepted the options.
It will be.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, uh, let's move on to pro and con debate or comments. Anybody? Peter Murphy?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Uh, I'm involved up in New Hampshire on the, on the milfoil team on the lake that I have a house at, and what happens is, we actually send a diver down to pick the milfoil. But before we did that, ten years ago, we really had to go through and control the milfoil to the point, like I said, now they can send a diver down and pick it, and they can, now they can identify where the milfoil is coming from. So this is a great program, and I've always spoken in favor of it. Continue the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ventresko?
Peter Ventresko, precinct eight. Uh, a few years back, before they started using chemicals, they were giving the weeds a haircut every year and just made it grow quicker. And I had a lot of research on chemicals, and it didn't go over good at the time here. But I'm all in favor of these chemicals to clean the ponds, but I think somebody else should be looking at the per, the company that's using these chemicals, because I don't think these ponds are getting cleaned fast enough, because I looked at other ponds years back, that the chemicals were being used, and a short time, they were clean. And it seems like after two or three years, these ponds, they're a lot cleaner, but they're not clean enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Did I see anybody? No. Okay, would you like to make a quick summary, Jerry?
I hope for your support again this year.
Okay, I believe we're ready to vote. Thank you for your presentation. Are we ready? Please vote now in a simple majority.
Thank you.
Okay, Article twenty eight passes. One oh seven, yes. Eight no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. We're gonna move on to the bottom of the page, fifty-five. Article twenty-nine, intersection improvements design, Plain and West Street intersection. Just to let everybody know, this is also an amended motion with a sunset clause. All right, for the motion, I ask Mr. Bonanocian, please.
That the town vote to appropriate fifty-five thousand dollars for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering, landscape design, and other related consulting services with respect to traffic improvements at the West Street Plain Street intersection and surrounding areas, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, fifty-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Seconded by Johnny Zavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted twelve to zero to recommend the motion for Article twenty-nine as written in the warrant.
Intergovernmental Relations, Kamel?
Intergovernmental Relations voted five to one to recommend Article twenty-nine to town meeting.
Thank you very much. Municipal Operations?
Municipal Operations voted six to one, uh, excuse me, six to zero to approve Article twenty-nine. Six to zero.
Six to zero. Thank you very much. All right, as I mentioned, this is an amended motion with the sunset clause. To make the amended motion, can I ask Mr. Jito if you're ready with that one? Oh, Steve Cavey, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the, uh, main motion to include at the very end the line exempt from Article seventy, annual town meeting, May first, twenty twenty-three sunset bylaw.
Seconded by Elliot Hanson. You have that? Thank you very much. Okay, senses an amendment to the main motion. I'm gonna ask by voice vote for acceptance. Any, I don't see anybody rising for debate, so by voice vote, all those in favor to accept the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, at this point in time, we have the presentation, and it's gonna be Mr. Tisdale. Please identify yourself to the body, please.
Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer. Thank you, Bob. Um, again, this is a, uh, traffic article for design improvements. Um, I am going to hand this over to our Assistant Town Engineer, Craig Horstfall. He's my right, right hand with all this kind of stuff. He, he manages most of all of our traffic projects and a lot of other traffic projects, other types of design projects in town, so, uh, instead of, uh, stealing the thunder from him, I'll let him do the presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Craig Horstfall, Assistant Town Engineer. Um, Article twenty-nine is a design article, uh, to renovate, uh, Plain and West Street intersection. As many of you may know, this, uh, intersection, it has a, a large painted island, uh, on the northbound, uh, approach on West Street, uh, and that large painted island, uh, generates a, uh, pretty much like an off-ramp that allows a, a quick right turn, um, onto Plain Street. Um, the alignment of the intersection is a bit skewed, it has poor sight distance, and the painted islands, uh, are confusing to motorists as they approach, uh, and the wide intersection has a, a really long, uh, crosswalk. Uh, there is no crosswalk there at the moment, but there's a long crossing distance for pedestrians. It's over a hundred feet. Uh, so this design article will look to improve safety measures, um, for the, uh, intersection for all modes of transport, so vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, uh, will improve the sight, uh, distance. Uh, the backup information that you have in book two has a conceptual drawing, uh, that illustrates what the intersection might look like after the design, uh, has been performed by our, um, our consultant engineers, GPI, whom we use, um, quite a bit in the town. So I think at the end of the, uh, uh, this article will, uh, provide at the end, uh, construction documents, so we will have a surveyed drawing. Um, it will be a designed, um, fully, uh, ready for construction, uh, set of drawings that we can go to bid for, for construction. I'll take any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, any technical questions? Mr. Jito?
Mr. Horstfall, um, my understanding is that that intersection also has a stop sign about twenty feet away from the end of the street, which causes a tremendous amount of confusion, and people stop there and then they start up, and there are a number of accidents that have occurred there.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, we look to, uh, rectify that, that situation there, and that's really in place because of where the painted island is. Um, we, we don't have the ability to put, at present time, a stop sign at the intersection because it's, it's just too wide.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lyons, please identify yourself.
Yeah, Frank, Frank Lyons, precinct eight, and I ask you patience, because I'm not quite sure this is a question, but, uh, I'm on the intergovernmental, um, committee, and a few of these articles that came through on free cash, I voted against. Uh, and because we don't really have a chair, I, I don't know that there was anybody's, but could I, uh, make a statement on, point of information, I guess, on why I voted against it?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, so that would be during comments and support?
Yeah, I'll let you do that during comments.
Okay, then I'll be back.
Okay, you can come back. Thank you very much, Mr. Lyons. Carolyn Campbell?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator. Will part of this design or look at the intersection in the way of coming south on West Street and trying to turn left onto Plain to make it easier to see what's coming?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, uh, we'll look at that. Um, there is a poor sight distance in that approach. Um, that parcel that, when you're turning left, is actually town-owned property, so we do have the ability to clear that vegetation and, uh, improve the sight distance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? Dave Lurie, do you have a question?
Yeah, through you, Dave Lurie, precinct six. How do you prioritize which intersections you're gonna work on? I know that there's problems in other parts of town, you know, speaking of like, you know, Pleasant Street, there's problems, you know, there's different parts of town that I could think of, and I don't, I don't think of that, I mean, I, I look at it like if there were just a few less trees, I'd be able to get through that intersection a lot better. That's how I look at that intersection.
Uh, yeah, that's a great question. Um, this intersection was actually identified in a road safety audit that was performed by, uh, the Old Colony Planning Council, uh, that was performed in, uh, twenty twenty-three, and this intersection particularly had some issues that were brought up. Um, we are aware of all your other intersections throughout town, and we do, uh, we have working on them, like, uh, you know, uh, School Street, uh, uh, we are currently, uh, going through the tip process on, on several, um, intersections throughout town.
Okay, um, anybody else for technical questions? Seeing none, let's go to comments. Mr. Lyons?
I'm still Frank, uh, precinct eight, uh, and I just wanted to make a comment on the vote for the intergovernmental. Um, at the time, it wasn't, um, clear the, what, what was gonna be done with free cash, because ob- obviously, we're voting on all that stuff now, and there was also, uh, significant cuts to services in the school, uh, and at the time, I was not comfortable, uh, as worthy as this article is, I, I wasn't comfortable voting for the free cash for it. Um, but, you know, that ship has kind of sailed, uh, so, you know, although I'm still not happy with the cuts to the services in the schools, I understand that, you know, had I tried to make a change or something, it would just, it would not have had support. Uh, so I just wanted to, this and there was another article, um, from the envi- uh, the climate change folks that I voted against, and where, where I'd place the vote now, after, you know, seeing what happened with the free cash and stuff, I would have voted in favor. Um, so I'm just doing this once, I won't do it for the climate folks, but the same is true there. Um, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Lisa Lyons, I believe you're next? No, who, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Jerry McDonald, precinct four. I'm in favor of this article. I urge you to support it. I can say that this art, this intersection, uh, is challenging for drivers, and it's all, I'm a bike rider, and I frequently find myself parked on West Street heading west across Plain Street, and we, me and my friends can be parked in the roadway, waiting to get across Plain Street, as we should, and I've had cars go behind me onto West Street and almost cream another car that's coming down West Street because they cut behind us, and thank God they did cut behind us, because I'd rather have that than, than hit me. But, uh, I'm all in favor of this. I think it'll make the intersection a lot safer for anybody that's a pedestrian, a bike rider, and traffic. It should serve to slow the traffic down a little bit. Uh, um, I hope it can be done without putting in a four-way stop, which I think would be overkill, but that's just my opinion, but I hope you, uh, vote for this. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Next up is Lisa Lyons.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So I'm all for this. This is what I mean when I speak about infrastructure being neglected. I think this is a safety issue, and the rest of the nearly thirty thousand res- residents need to be consi- their safety needs to be considered, as well as, let's say, the schools. So I appreciate you doing this and hope you continue considering the safety of all the residents in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collins, did you have a comment?
Chuck Collins, precinct one. Um, I drive this route quite a bit during the week. Uh, I know it's a dangerous intersection, but my concern is, they say about pedestrians, I have never seen a pedestrian or bicycle on that road. Um, I know that John and Mr. Jito live down that area, but my question is...
Please, uh, give Mr. Collins the respect that he deserves, right?
I hope so.
Mr. Collins, please continue.
All right, so my question is, we keep putting all these design, uh, things out there for different streets, but we haven't fixed any of the ones we already approved. Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street, that's, I mean, they took down a friggin' telephone pole. Sorry.
Five-second delay.
But I'm saying, that poor guy in the corner, his fence is taken on probably three or four times a, a year. That should be number one priority.
Well, let's talk about this article. I just wanted to...
What I'm saying is, I disapprove of this article because we have so many articles or projects that we're supposed to be doing that we're not doing. I say, get the ones we already have approved, get it done, put this on the back burner. It's not that important. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Seeing no one, rising. Would you like to do a, uh, brief summary?
Certainly, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think that, uh, this article will improve safety in this area. It is an existing, uh, confusing intersection, uh, and when we are through with the design and the construction, uh, it will be a much safer, uh, and traditional intersection for folks to navigate through.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation and your summary. All right, before us is the main motion as amended. This is a simple majority. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now. One, two, or three. All right, Article twenty-nine passes. Ninety-six, yes. Twenty-one, no. One abstention. I declare that a vote. We're gonna move on. All right, next page, Article thirty. That appears on page fifty-six. Canton and School Street Intersection Improvements Design. This also is an amended motion coming up with the sunset clause. Can I ask for the motion from Mr. Bonanocian, please?
That the town vote to appropriate two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the costs of a consultant to undertake transportation-related engineering analysis... Including all incidental and related costs, and that to meet this appropriation, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded by Johnny Zavino. Can I get the finance committee report, please?
For Article thirty as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Can I get Intergovernmental Relations Committee report, please?
Intergovernmental Relations voted six to zero to recommend Article thirty to town meeting.
Thank you very much. And Municipal Operations Committee report?
Municipal Operations voted five to zero to one to approve Article thirty.
Thank you all very much. Okay, now, as I mentioned, this is an amended motion with the sunset clause. Mr. Cavey, can I have the motion from you?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I move that we amend the, the current main motion to include at the very end the following sentence: exempt from Article seventy, our, uh, annual town meeting, May first, twenty twenty-three sunset bylaw.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Just give me one moment, please. Make a note here. All right, again, I see no one rising to debate this or comment on this motion, amended motion, so I'm gonna ask for a voice vote to accept this amended motion as made by Mr. Cavey. And, uh, just a simple majority. All those in favor say aye. say aye. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you all very much. Making the presentation I have, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you very much. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer. This article is for design services for Canton and School Street intersection. Currently, the project's already under design, well under design. We've gone through several Mass DOT meetings, design meetings. Our engineers have started design. Through the design process, as you can imagine, with an intersection of this nature, Mass DOT has comments. One of their comments is to make sure this signalized intersection, which it will be, will be coordinated with another signalized intersection at School and Cushing Street, on the other side of the train tracks, in that there's signalization for the train tracks and gates that are coordinated with both these signals, so nobody gets trapped in between the gates. So that's a change that came through the Mass DOT process. And Mass DOT has currently changed their entire review process. Meetings that used to have five or 10 people on them now have about 40 or 50 people on them now. So, as you can imagine, there's many comments and issues that can arise from projects like this. But like I said, it's an existing contract that we have for $416,000 that we had for, that we utilized Opera funds for. So this is the first time we come to town meeting for $225,000 for the additional services with those design costs associated with those changes I just explained. This project, we were happy to mention that it is programmed on the FY 2028 tip, which is the Mass DOT program, Transportation Improvement Program. The project's estimated at 4.25 million now, probably be close to the 5 million. So with the investment of 225,000 from the town, we will get 5 million in construction, construction costs given to the town because of our effort at town meeting here.
You all set?
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. Okay, time for pro and con, excuse me, technical questions. Carolyn Campbell?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Was there any thought? I was looking at the background material for this intersection plan. Has there any thought of just closing off that entrance from, what's it, Summer Street, right into the intersection that merges right in with School Street at the intersection?
There's a lot of thought about closing it off, making it one way in, one way out, and how it impacts the other traffic in the area. There are a lot of people that utilize that approach. So we've counted that approach. We've actually simplified the geometry on that approach, and that approach will be coordinated with the signal now.
All right, thank you. I would still recommend cutting it off completely. I go through that intersection frequently and just, you know, I get cut off both ways, either from the right, from people going into the intersection, or people cutting across it and going into that, making the turn from the intersection to go away. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for technical questions? Seeing none, let's move into pro and con debate. Did you have a question? Okay, we'll take one more question. Yeah, she has a question.
In this, in this plan, would there be...
Could you just...
Oh, sorry, Sandra Souza, Precinct One. In this plan, would there be any taking of any property, land, anybody's land?
That's a good question. There'll be...
It's tight in there. Very tight.
Oh, it's very tight. Yeah, there's, there were a lot of things that Mass DOT wanted us to do, but we just didn't have the room to do it. You know, they wanted very wide bike lanes and striping and things like that. We just don't have the room.
There's no room for the cars, let alone...
The houses are on top of the road. You can't take any more of their land. So there'll be things like temporary easements for construction, grading, and things like that, but no permanent takings at this point in time.
At this point in time?
Right. We're not through the final design stages yet, so I can't guarantee that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Chuck, did you have a question, or do you want to go into comments?
Pro and con?
Sure. Comments also?
Pro and con.
Okay, I'm going to take Mr. Collins for us.
Chuck Collins, Precinct One. Even though I was against the previous article, I'm for this article. School Street by American Conception, and that little side street, which is Summer Street, I think it is, it's dangerous, very dangerous. And that house on the corner by, right across from the Brazilian restaurant with the tree there, you can't come out that street without putting your nose out all the way into Canton Street. So I'm in favor of spending money for design and surveying. I think we already did something like this a while ago, didn't we? Mr. Tisdale, did we do a design on this before?
There's not enough time for a question.
Well, I'm just...
I know what you're saying, but no more questions right now.
Okay.
Okay. We're just taking comments, pro and con debate.
That's what I thought. Okay, but again, I just want to say I'm in favor of this article here to, for design and construction of that intersection. The other one, West Street? No. See ya.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Mr. David Laurie.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six. This is what an actual problem looks like that we have to solve at town meeting. And I just pray to God that articles like this and the design and construction and roadwork that has to be done up and down Pleasant, 139, and all the serious problems in the town get prioritized and pushed down on the list what the previous speakers was talking about. This is a real problem, and those real serious problems need to be prioritized because some of the problems in town just don't rise to the occasion the way this does. I just hope and pray to God that it gets looked at that way.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Jonah Rosenblatt.
Hi, Jonah Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to ask the town engineer, how do you come up...
Jonah, excuse me. You got to bring the microphone a little closer and speak a little louder.
Okay, this is good, right?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. How do you come up with this list?
Yeah, no questions right now. It's, we're just talking pro-con debate or comments. Questions are over. Do you have a comment? Any other comment?
Okay, I got a comment.
Sure.
Could you please look at the intersection of Island Street and...
It's, it's, this is not the proper article for that. All right, thank you. Can anybody help with the microphone? Thank you all. Anybody else? Pro and con debate? Seeing none?
One more.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Sylvia Whiting, Precinct Six. I just wanted to comment that last Friday morning, my husband went through that intersection and was hit by a car that ran the stop sign. He's now at Boston Medical Center in intensive care. So these are definitely priorities, and I wished it had been done a few years ago. He certainly didn't deserve what he's going through right now.
Okay. Yeah, we're very sorry for your husbands involved in that accent. And thank you for your comments. All right. Anybody else for the pro and con debate or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Tisdale, would you like to do a brief summary? No, thank you very much for that brief summary.
All set.
Thank you very much. All right, this is, let me just double check. This is all from Free Cash, so a simple majority. Are we ready to vote? Okay, please vote now. One, two, or three? Okay, Article 30 passes. One eighteen yes, one no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. We're moving on. The bottom of the page, Article 31, Cedar Hill Drainage and Parking Improvements Design. I just want to alert the town meeting body that this is also amended motion with the sunset clause that we'll deal with in a few moments. Now I'm asking for the motion from Mr. Vaughn Anokian.
That the town vote to appropriate $67,000 for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering, and other related consulting services with respect to drainage, parking, traffic, and landscape improvements at the Cedar Hill Golf Course, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $67,000 be transferred from retained earnings.
Moved and seconded by Johnny Zavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to zero to recommend the motion for Article 31 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Operations Committee report?
Municipal Operations voted five yes, zero no, one abstention to approve Article 31. I abstained because I've been a member of the Cedar Hill Golf Course Operations Committee for 46 years.
Thank you, and thank you for your service for 46 years to Cedar Hill Operations. All right, at this point in time, we need the amended motion, and I'm just looking on my list here. Mr. Jito, can you make that motion? Thank you.
Add at the end a sentence saying exempt from Article 70, annual town meeting, May 1st, 2023, sunset bylaw.
Who seconded that? I just need your name. Cynthia Walsh, you seconded that? Thank you, Cynthia. Just give me one moment, please. All right, I see no one rising to debate this or comment on this, so I'm going to go right to ask for a voice vote. Simple majority to accept this amended motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Thank you all very much. All right, for the presentation, Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you very much. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Town Engineer. Again, this is another design article for design improvements to the parking lot and stormwater management areas at Cedar Hill. Just a little recap on why we come to town meeting with design articles instead of the whole thing. I think it's not doing town meeting justice, and as you can see, the track record over the seven or eight years. When I first started, we would come in with articles for $800,000 for a culvert, and then it would come in at $400,000. That's not needed. To me, the step one is always come in with a design, and then we come into the following town meeting with a very tight number of what it costs to build whatever we're building. So that's why we always come in with a design article, and then usually the following year with a construction article. That's what we're doing here. This is going to be funded out of retained earnings from the Cedar Hill Golf Course. What this will do is, as you all are familiar with, the Cedar Hill Golf Course parking lot is gravel, a little bit of broken-up pavement, and then there's a pond. All the cars park in the parking lot. The parking spaces aren't striped, so sometimes you don't get the most efficient parking layout because people, if the first person parks wrong, everybody else parks wrong, and then you get less cars parked in the parking lot. So he says guaranteed. So that's what happens there. But also, from an environmental standpoint, which is very important, you know, the parking lot does not comply with today's DEP stormwater management standards and regulations. Cars park on the gravel, a lot of cars, and, you know, everything drains through the pond, the oils and greases, salts, whatever on the cars. That doesn't comply with DEP stormwater management. What we're proposing here is to actually pave the parking lot. Everything will pitch to a stormwater feature that's right along the entire pond. It will be called a buyer-retention basin. Most people don't know what that is, but it's a shell depression that has certain soils in it and certain plantings in it that take all the nutrients out of the stormwater and filter it. And then that's maintained by DPW on a yearly basis. We did this with the Gibbons School a few years back. We helped the school department out with that. We put four or five stormwater management areas over there. It was a very successful project, I think. We were able to get a grant, a 319 grant through DEP to fund that. We believe we can do the same thing here. If not, fund the entire project, a large portion of the construction. But step one is to do the design, get that done, and then when the grant comes up, we have a fully funded design. It's kind of a slam dunk at that point because we have all the information we need. The design will include land surveying, soil testing, a preliminary design, a local permitting, and then final design and bidding documents. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Tisdale. All right, technical questions section. Lisa Lyons?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So you answered part of the question, which was, how much is the construction going to cost, the construction phase, and who's going to pay for it? That's, you just said, is it a fully funded grant, or would a portion of that construction project be coming back as an ask to town meeting?
Yeah. That's a good question. I think with the design, we'll yield what the construction cost is. And these grants, we were actually applying for one this year for another project. They go up to about a half a million dollars. So if this thing came in at, I don't think it's going to be six or 700,000, well, let's just say it's a little over the 500,000. We may have to come back to town meeting with 100,000, but the project would be 600,000, which we could probably most likely take out of retained earnings at that point in time.
You just answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up is Mr. David Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six. This through you to the Finance Director. Just wanted to see, what is the balance in retained earnings for Cedar Hill?
The retained earnings for Cedar Hill was certified at $696,336, with the approval of Article 27 at 88,000, and if this article is approved at 67,000, the retained earnings balance will be 5,413,36.
Okay, thank you for that. And through you, Mr. Moderator, do we have any other parts of retained earnings that are going to be earmarked for a project that we know of, or is that whole amount of retained earnings at 500 and change available for the project when it does come out and you're done with the survey or the study?
Retained earnings is one moment in time, which is on June 30 of the fiscal year, and it does not get certified until the following fiscal year. So once we close out June 30, 2024, that retained earnings balance goes away.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, we don't have any projects that are going to be pulling from that amount. There's nothing in the pipeline or...
Well, I asked the question. I didn't get an answer.
Well, we're not, we're just on this article.
Do I know other articles on town meeting floor to be approved by the legislative body?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Technical questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to pro and con debate or comments. Anybody? Seeing none, and we're going to get ready to vote. This is just coming from retained earnings, so a simple majority. And are we ready to vote? This is the main motion as amended. Please vote, as you are starting already to vote. Okay, that's fine. Let's keep it moving. Article 31 passes. One oh eight yes, three no, two abstentions. Thank you all for voting. We're moving on. We completed Article 32 this evening at the beginning. Let's turn the page to Article 33, page 58, properties located at 760 Washington Street with the map coordinates there, and off of Rose Street. Okay, this again, it may be, is this going to be dismissed at some point? No? Okay. Well, let's hear the motion first, I believe. Well, do I have a motion to dismiss by anybody?
We would like to do a small presentation before we do that.
If I could have a minute to explain the article?
I give you a couple of minutes to explain it, sure.
I can, less than 60 seconds.
You can have a couple of minutes.
I think, I think town meeting deserves an explanation of why we're dismissing the article.
Sure. I'll just do that as under moderator's discretion. Go ahead, sir.
So in a nutshell, you know, over the last couple of years, you know, obviously the hole in the ground has been a big topic of conversation. Last year at this time, the developer promised us steel would be delivered and steel would be going up by town meeting came. It didn't, it didn't happen. All right. We just, we didn't go through with the article. This year, we were not, we're not going to get caught with our pants down twice, right? So we, over the last few years, few months, we actually, I've been discussing this with the developer once every week or two, saying, we're going to come to town meeting, we're going, we have almost unanimous support. I've never seen a town so united on a project to take your property by eminent domain and get this project done ourselves. I said, but under...
They said, but under one condition, we will dismiss that article. If we see proof that you're doing it, we want you to do it. We don't wanna do this. Who, who, we want, what town actually wants to build a project like that? We don't know what we're doing. You know, we don't wanna build a, a building like that. We want him to build the permitted building. So what he's done is, as you all know, is he's ordered the steel and it's gone up through the first two levels. Uh, and that was the promise. If he did that, we were gonna dismiss the article. And the condition of that is work would still keep on continuing. He gave us a construction schedule. I, I put it on the front desk for all of you. And if he delays on that construction schedule, we can always come back in the fall or next annual town meeting and have the same article in front of you. And that's the game plan, and so far it's worked. So let's just cross our fingers and hope he keeps on continuing. I can't see why not unless he's just a very wealthy person that can spend all this money on steel and let it sit there.
You all set? Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. Can I get a motion to dismiss this article?
So made.
Steve Caby made the motion. Who seconded that? Jim Garen. We're gonna just go and take a, uh, voice vote. This is motion to dismiss Article thirty-three. Simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all. Give me one moment, please. Who seconded that motion? Jim Garen, thank you. Just trying to make notes. All right, next up is Article thirty-four. That appears on page fifty-nine, school safety vestibules. I just wanna caution the body that this is again amended motion with the sunset clause that we'll get to in a few moments. I gotta ask, uh, Mr., the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Bonanokian, for the motion.
That the town vote to appropriate ninety thousand dollars for the upgrade of main entrance vestibules, including doors, frames, locks, and technology at the Wilkins Elementary School, Jones Elementary School, and O'Donnell Middle School, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, ninety thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, that's, and can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted eight to three to one to recommend the motion for Article thirty-four as written in the warrant. Diane Dolan recused herself as she works for Stoughton Public Schools.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, again, this is the amended motion with the sunset clause. This is Article thirty-four. And Catherine Wise, would you like to make that motion? Or are you ready to make that motion?
I would like to amend this motion by adding at the end a sentence that says exempt from Article seventy annual town meeting, May first, twenty twenty-three sunset by law.
Seconded, seconded by Elliot Hanson. Thank you very much. All right, again, I need a voice vote on this, simple majority to accept the amended motion as made. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you all very much for voting. Mr. Joseph Baez, our Superintendent.
Joe Baez, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The next three articles on behalf of the school department are what we consider school safety articles. Uh, this article is the continuation of what started, uh, with the prior administration and school committee. We are continuing to do so at the Wilkins, the Jones, and the O'Donnell Middle School, um, at the, um, as it's outlined of appropriating ninety thousand dollars, um, and we would appreciate uh, the support for this. Uh, vestibules really become a two-part entrance into buildings, which is, um, really one of the biggest recommendations in, uh, public safety within schools that we currently have. I hope you support it.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, time for technical questions. Any technical questions? I saw Lisa Lyons first coming down, followed by Jim Garen.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So just quick question. Has there been any consideration, there's a maintenance budget within the school department? I'm just curious, as given that the school department increased their budget seven point one percent, asked for a hundred and fourteen million dollars for a debt exclusion, and now has multiple quote, "safety" articles. I just think that is grotesquely greedy to ask of our taxpayers. I just wanna know, the school has a maintenance for this kinda money. Why is this type of thing? Because when we use free cash, w- we are not going into infrastructure or saving. So I wanna know why these articles are not in the maintenance budgets.
In general, in fifteen years of doing this, doing this, something like a vestibule would not be in a maintenance budget. We're not just trying to upgrade one small piece of an item. A ninety thousand dollar request in our preventative maintenance line item would eat up a hundred percent of that line item um, in terms of maintenance and emergencies that take place. Um, this is just pretty much aligned with every department that I've heard over the last six nights of capital expense. Um, I'll leave it to the body to decide what you wanna do. This superintendent's not gonna take a chance on any public safety in a school. It's the only priority that I have. It's not MCAS scores, with all due respect, although that is very important. The fact of the matter is, my responsibility is to the public safety of my children in the schools and my staff. So, um, I, I don't, I, I don't think, um, I don't think that the other comments that you made are, are accurate uh, in terms of, um, the information related to a capital item such as the three that are before you, this one. The next one, um, which literally goes to, uh, parking lots, which I'll speak to in a second when that comes up. And then the third one, which is a safety audit that, uh, we've never done as a public school system.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Kirby, you're next.
Bob Kirby, Precinct Six. Do these, um, projects include, uh, buzzing technology? For example, uh, after the school has been populated with the students, the doors lock and someone has to hit a buzzer and be let in. Um, is that included in this?
Yeah, buzzer, camera, and then the specialty locks, and then, in my case, um, the, uh, staff administration have fobs, and so those give you the direct access. Everybody else has to go through that two-pronged process.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Jim Garen?
Jim Garen, Precinct Six. Last year, we voted on a couple of articles for, for school vestibules with, uh, bullet resistant glass. Does this ninety thousand dollars include bullet resistant glass?
Yeah, we don't have bullet resistant glass. There's a shatterproof glass that's utilized. That's a very different, um, a bulletproof glass. Isn't that something that you're seeing, uh, in general in these public, um, projects? What you're seeing is a, um, a shatter where, um, it disintegrates, um, and takes more than one shot, if you will, to get through. Um, that's typically what's been used in, uh, public schools.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna take Mr. Caby next, then we'll get to you, Becca.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dr. Baez, uh, I had an opportunity to tour the schools, many of the schools with you, and I noticed that several of the schools had some of these measures already in place and, uh, that you have listed here, uh, the Wilkins, the Jones School, and the O'Donnell. Is that to provide the same sort of security that the other schools, uh, currently have?
Yeah, this will make, um, the, um, high school and all of the elementary schools, um, except for the South School, go through that two-pronged process.
Thank you for doing this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Becca? We're in technical questions. That's okay, we'll come back to you. Next up is Jonah.
Jonah Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven. I just wanna know what protocols are in place if a teacher puts like something in between the door to keep it propped open? Like, um, is this gonna incorporate any kind of safety measure to overcome that?
Yeah, great question. I won't get into too much detail because it is a safety issue, and I, I take the right under the state law that we keep that within the school committee executive session. But I will tell you this, we are currently working with the fire department and police department. We have a crisis team, um, that's working with those two departments in handling everything to do with those types of things. We're doing drills on a regular basis. Um, just approximately two months ago, I requested a full walkthrough by the head janitor and the principal of the building of every building on the same day and created a list of any needs and issues that came up, and then we start to address those issues as they need to be addressed. Uh, we are currently also, um, um, once you enter the building as a staff member, you are in the building, and you have to leave the building through, um, the main area and come out the main area. And of course, that's always a catch twenty-two because you do have people who don't go through the protocols, but we're addressing those as they come up.
Okay, and I have one other question. Um, do you have any maintenance, um, or is there any maintenance that's ever done? Is there like prescribed maintenance like every year or whatever on the school so we don't have to keep replacing them?
Yeah, so the, the idea here is, um, the situations that we have here are way beyond quote, um, maintenance. Um, that's why we're going with new. Um, there's, there's just no more maintenance I can do to some of the doors and areas that are, that are there, and there is no wiring, for example, et cetera, so that's why we're going through that. So you'll see in the future, um, that in, in most instances, you have a maintenance plan, a preventative maintenance plan, and a capital plan. And right now, our school department, we're working to create that capital plan, um, that will be aligned, um, we hope with the, um, with all departments and be prioritized as, as can be done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Moving on, Mr. Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six. Through you, um, to the Superintendent. Does this expenditure contribute towards net school spending? Or because it's being paid from free cash, is it not being contributing?
That's correct. Articles do not, are not part of net school spending. It's part of the actual operational budget only on the nine line items of expenses that are part of net school spending.
Okay, so then, to the previous speaker who brought up on this particular article, ninety thousand dollars, if it was part of your operating budget, would, would qualify for net school spending? So it's, it's not because of the way it's coming to us now, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, um, Mr. Arnold Feinberg.
Arnie Feinberg, Precinct Six. Um, my concern is all the other doors. How do you prevent, um, someone, someone bangs on a window and says they wanna come in, they walk over to a door in the back? Open it up. What's the protocol and how's that prevented?
Yeah, so again, I will not get into specific protocols with the body, um, based upon, uh, being able to utilize state regulations that as Superintendent, uh, myself, the committee, and, um, um, public safety have that information and knowledge, but we do have internal protocols. We are practicing, as I said earlier, those protocols. Um, it is a constant attention to detail, if you will, in terms of, um, folks not doing what they're supposed to be doing, uh, i.e. doors being left open, so on and so forth. But we currently are utilizing only certain doors with fobs for staff, um, throughout all of our buildings, um, so they have access, but the general public is literally through the front door only.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have pro, uh, excuse me, technical questions? Seeing none, pro and con debate. Becca, you're up first. We'll ask you.
Sorry. Trying to do it this way. Becca Marks in Precinct Seven. Um, I have a child who is, who went through the, um, elementary middle school here in Stoughton. And the, I grew up in Ohio. We had tornado drills, that was it. They have shooter drills, which kills me. The things that my child has to think about when he's at school, this is something that I think, I'm totally for this. This is what our free cash is meant for. We have it, it's for these capital projects that thirty years ago, who thought about this? But now we need this, so I'm a hundred percent in support of this, and I hope you are too.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Sandra Souza?
Sandra Souza, Precinct One. Um, we have no greater responsibility as parents or as citizens than to protect our children. That is first and foremost. And I can't think of any way I'd rather spend my money than on this to keep our children safe. Anyone that does not vote for this really needs to examine their priorities. I don't care what you think about net school spending, what you think about anything in terms of taxes, but we have a responsibility to keep our children safe. Just look at the school shootings across America. I don't wanna see Stoughton on the news. I don't wanna hear that there's been a, a shooting or any kind of breach of a school and that one of our children from our community has been hurt, or God forbid worse. So please, I don't wanna see one no up there because I'll be totally disgusted if I do. Thank you.
Well, let's not, let's not critique people how they vote. I know, but I understand it's your opinion, but I'm asking you not to critique. But I'm telling you how it should be portrayed to the body here. You shouldn't be critiquing people, critiquing people how they vote. Okay, thank you. We'll leave it at that, or agree to disagree. Okay, next up is... Who's up next? Uh, Mr. Laurie, apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six. This, the decision about, you know, how you spend money on the safety of the children is really what's at question. It has nothing to do with saying no to safety for children. That's not what you're hearing. The only person and group that are responsible for the safety of the children is the superintendent and the school committee. We give them the funding to take care of these things in an operating budget that's huge. It's over sixty-two million dollars. They have more than enough money to take care of these things than to come to...
Mr. Laurie, I want, I want you to redirect to...
It's my, it's my, it's my, I've...
Excuse me, I'm asking you to stay focused on the ninety thousand dollars.
I am. This is ninety thousand dollars that's coming out of free cash. It's a question of how it's being funded. It's not a no vote to safety. That's what's confused, I think people are confused about what a no vote is. A no vote is, excuse me, folks on the school side, please take care of the safety of our children. It has nothing to do with saying no to safety. Okay, that's a misconception that I hope that people understand, that they're voting to protect free cash from going into something that should go towards net school spending, which is denied by the way this is put together. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on. Melissa Lynch, please identify yourself.
Melissa Lynch, Precinct Three. So all I'd like to say is thoughts and prayers are just not enough and too late when they're said. Actions are not greedy. These actions are not greedy. And I am grateful for the superintendent and the school committee for bringing this forward and protecting our schools, our children, our teachers, and our staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Mr. John Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, John Perry, Precinct Three. Um, probably missed my opportunity with technical questions, so, uh, forgiveness if that's the case. But I'm wondering, uh, South School is not on this list, and I know that there's been some talk about replacing the school and such, and I'm not sure if that's the reasoning behind it or if South School has been done already in the past. Uh, just a general thought, as if a new South School is issued and granted through the town and through voting, uh, it's still most likely the number of years before that actually gets implemented. And can we afford three or four years of the South School vestibule not being?
Is that a question, Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
We're in pro and con debate right now.
Did I miss technical question? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Keep that on the back burner.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, let me just, Jess Minor?
Jess Minor, Precinct Five. I appreciate everyone's vehemence. Move the question.
Okay, I'll take that. Um, okay. Who seconded that, Bob Cone? Just give us a moment to record that. Okay, to move the question, cut off debate requires two-thirds vote. I'll ask for a voice vote. If there's any doubt in the mind of the moderator, we'll have to take a, a clicker vote. So all those to vote to, uh, cut off debate, please say aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Debate is cut off. All right, would you like to do a summary, Superintendent?
Uh, no. I, I think comments have, uh, moved this forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Superintendent. All right, this is just a simple majority. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now, one, two, or three. Article, Article thirty-four passes. One oh five yes, ten no, three abstentions. I declare that a vote. Thank you all for voting. Let's move on to Article thirty-five, school safety, lining and marking of parking lots. Again, I'd like to just note to the body here, it's amended motion, sunset clause. We'll bring that up in a moment. I will ask for a motion by Bonanokian, please.
That the town vote to appropriate fifty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of completing the marking lines and signage of the parking lots at all pre-K through eight schools, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, fifty-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by John Zavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted seven to four to one to recommend the motion for Article thirty-five as written in the warrant.
35 as written in the warrant. Diane Dolan recused herself as she works for Stoughton Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anokian. Okay, this is Article 35. And Catherine Wise, would you like to make the amended motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend this motion by adding at the end the phrase exempt from Article 70 Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023, sunset by law.
Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Okay. Again, I'll just ask for a voice vote. Again, I have to caution you, it's simple majority, but I have to be clear in the mind of the moderator. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Thank you all very much. All right, now it's time for the presentation.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Joe Baito, Superintendent of Schools, through you to the members. This is to take care of seven of our schools' parking lots because of the safety concerns we have outside of these lots. To prior article comments that were made, this is a perfect example of using one-time funds to get it all lined up. And from now on, it will be in our preventative maintenance budget. From year to year, we will be utilizing our DPW department in my conversations with Mrs. Jaffoon about two weeks ago.
Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, time for technical questions. Mr. Lurie, this is a technical question.
David Lurie, Precinct Six, through you, Mr. Moderator. So if I heard you correct, this ordinarily in the budget would qualify for net school spending. I just want to make sure that lines on a parking lot qualify for net school spending.
Yeah, net school spending will be under the operation and maintenance line item. So anything that's in that line item at the end of the year's total operational costs, teaching and learning, all those different nine line items that are reported, then two years come out as audited and give you the final net school spending on the other side, would be part of that. So for example, if we decided that we were going to do the Jones School and the Given School three years from now, and we put in our operations that we were going to put $6,200 in there to do that, that would be in that operation line item and would count.
Thank you. And second question?
Sure.
So if we say no to this article, you with the DPW would be able to take care of it within your own operating budget?
In speaking to the Superintendent of Public Works, he said that the best thing for us to do is to do exactly what we're doing, which is to get it all done through the professional company, if you will, get it all lined up the way we want to, which is what we did recently. We also did with the high school project. And then from then on, they would be able to utilize their resources. They can't do seven schools in one summer with manpower. They just can't do it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, pro and con debate? Seeing none. Dr. Baito, would you like to do a quick summary?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this is going to be, let me just check my notes. Coming from free cash, simple majority. Okay, are we ready to vote? Please vote now. One, two, or three. Article 35 passes, 96 yes, 15 no, 1 abstention. Declare that a vote. Thank you. Let's move on. Article 36, the next page, School Safety, Security Audit. That appears on page 60, right at the top there. Again, this has an amended motion with the sunset clause that will be coming up in a few moments. At this time, I ask Vaughn Anokian for the motion.
That the town vote to appropriate $20,000 for the purposes of hiring a professional school security consultant to complete a thorough and comprehensive safety security audit of all eight school buildings, and that to meet this appropriation, that $20,000 be transferred from free cash.
Motion's been moved and seconded by John Inzavino. Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted seven to four to one to recommend the motion for Article 36 as written in the warrant. Diane Dolan recused herself as she works for Stoughton Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Municipal Operations, please.
Municipal Operations voted six to zero to approve Article 36.
Okay, thank you very much. As I mentioned, this is an amended motion with the sunset clause. Catherine, can you make that motion?
I'd like to amend this motion by ending after the last sentence the phrase... Can you put it up?
Take your time.
Thank you. Exempt from Article 70 Annual Town Meeting, May 1, 2023, sunset by law.
Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Again, I'm going to ask by voice vote. It's got to be unanimous, simple, well, it doesn't have to be unanimous, simple majority. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, unanimous, as I thought it would be. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Baito, presentation, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the membership. For the last 15 years, working with public safety in the communities that I've worked in, including now here in Stoughton, through the work of the U.S. Department of Education, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Mass Police Chiefs Association, the State Police Chiefs Association, the FBI, and Homeland Security are all part of public safety to do with schools. In this particular area, what we're looking for is a study of the vulnerability and prevention assessment of all eight of our schools, to then therefore ID common problems, create the priorities, analyze the best practices already in place or can be put into place, and analyze the costs, including no to low cost, moderate cost, capital cost, and potential grants. In my previous district, part of this, upgrades were done through grants. We had a four district grant with the federal government for $600,000 that ended up giving my prior place some of these priorities. This report would be shared internally with the School Committee and externally with the Police Department, Fire Department, and if needed, the Select Board in executive session through the Town Manager as a way to prioritize if expenses are needed. We will also get from this written report through the third-party experts in the field of working in public education, what we are currently doing in terms of crisis planning, everything from our fire drill procedures and so on and so forth, and any of the new procedures that are out there that our men and women and our local departments are providing to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baito. Okay, time for technical questions. I see Brian Holmes. Please state your name and precinct number.
Brian Holmes, Precinct Three. Through you to the Finance Committee Chair. I don't know if I heard that right. Seven in favor, four against, to recommend a town meeting.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, that is correct.
Can you provide a short answer of the opposition?
Short answer as to why they oppose?
Yes.
I can do that if you want, Vaughn.
Sure.
If that's all right with you, Mr. Moderator, I believe that the person who is offering to answer this is one of the people who opposed.
Okay, I'll take that. Lisa Lyons, please identify yourself.
Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two, and I apologize for not saying through you, Mr. Moderator. So the same, the reason that people are opposing this is because we give the schools have a near $63 million budget to keep coming back to town meeting and using free cash when we could be saving it for building funds and subsidies. Again, we love our precious children as much as everyone else in here. And I think you all think it's funny, but there's no money tree, and when you find it, we would be happy to give everybody everything. So I hope that answers your question, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Did you have a question, Lisa?
Yes, hi. So, thank you. So I just want to know why, again, this is not being paid for, because this is not a capital item, this is a consultant, why this is not being paid out of the massive school budget? Because it prevents us from spending money on our infrastructure for the safety of all the other residents in the streets.
Well, again, in this particular case, utilizing this process allows for us to bring in a third party. We didn't typically would not fund a consultant of this type through the operating budget. It typically wouldn't be part of net school spending. It could be. It's a question I can ask Desi and get an answer to down the road for you folks. But typically, a study like this, we want to present it as a way where we are defining our safety protocols internally, and then the body is part of that. There was a comment made earlier about the Superintendent and the School Committee are responsible for the safety of children and staff. I would tell you that the responsibility is to the community as a whole. That's why we have the men and women that protect us and the men and women in this body that are supporting this. The second part to your question is, I think that there's no, and I may be out of order, Mr. Moderator, but it was made as a comment, the school budget is the only budget that is not receiving what it needs in terms of not having to lay off staff. It's the only department that's doing that. That is not a knock on municipal government. I don't infight that way. The fact of the matter is, the money that we do have is still laying off staff. There'll be more layoffs coming out next week based on town meeting completing and all that, we hope. And the issues before us are real, and the issues are only getting more and more, not less and less. And those issues need to be addressed, or they become even more of an issue. And so I think that the budget is a big budget. I understand that. It's a predominantly significant number that's coming through SOA funding as well, which is literally every other taxpayer in the Commonwealth, along with the Stoughton taxpayer, paying for this budget. And I think the last part that's really, really important is that when we look at the dynamics of what we're trying to do over the last few years, the prior administrations and School Committee have been driven around trying to provide direct resources to children. You know, it's expensive. There's no doubt about that. We made critical decisions and absolutely fantastic decisions around fees. We had almost 300 more kids participate at Stoughton High School in athletics this year because there weren't fees. That's just a fact of our families. And so, yes, that caused maybe another $150,000 that's in our operating budget, but it stopped families from having to pay $250 fees every sport season, so on and so forth. So the community is making through you, the town meeting, through the School Committee, the Superintendent's Office, we're making decisions in the best interest, I think, of all by having and making sure that we are providing the best public education that we can. And you know what? We aren't. I have a list that just came out today, and again, that I asked. You should see the list, and we will be publicizing the list of the colleges that kids are going to, and the workplaces that they're going to, and the intertrends they go into, and the military service that they're providing our country. And it's not just one kid, by the way. It's multiple kids. So, you know, we can talk about the school budget being big. It's always been big in Stoughton, by the way. I used to sit in your seat when I used to hear it's too big, when I was a town meeting member or when I was a School Committee member. So we are directing every penny towards children as much as we can, which basically means the cost of personnel.
So I have a second question?
Yes, you do. Okay. Please wrap it up.
To follow up with that, there are administrators, I watched both the School Committee and the presentations made to multiple committees, least of which was the Finance Committee, and extensively went through the school budget. Now, I know, school budget can't be picked apart on individual line items. That's why I made my...
Lisa, we're talking, if you can go back to this article, School Safety, Security Audit.
You gave the Superintendent some leeway. I would like some as well. Thank you.
Well, he's trying to explain your whole rationale.
Yeah, well, I have to give a prelude to the question.
Well, as a technical question, listen to the moderator. I'm asking you to refrain from that and go back to the...
Excuse me. Who said that? Please do not say that again. I'll ask you to leave the room. Please. You don't do those things. Okay? Don't disrespect the body here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Lisa, I'm asking you to go back to this article, please.
Okay. Okay, so back to this article. I think that this should be done through the massive school budget, and I'm not sure still with your lengthy answer why it is not being done and being taken away from the 30,000 other taxpayers in this town. Because when we use it from free cash, it's coming away from all the other residents.
Let me just say, I think that was answered before, so...
Okay, then I acquiesce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Lurie.
David Lurie, Precinct Six, through you. I keep asking the net school spending question because I'm also confused. The first article sounded like the net school, then the lines on parking lots, not so much, and this one's even more fuzzy than that. So I respect the fact that you have to check in to make sure. So I'm hoping that we might be able to get that at some point, so I can kind of see these really vague articles that don't really seem to fit in a box somewhere.
So net school spending takes the nine different line items of our total operational budget only. It does not take into account an article in most cases that I know of. There have been some examples where that hasn't worked, but it doesn't go that way. But in general, articles are outside of the scope of the operating school budget, which I think is one of your points.
Yes.
As you go forward with some of these articles, you'll see that, for example, even in this article, there could be a significant capital item that needs to take place that we might ask for a capital item. But there might be low, moderate, and what we would consider typical operational expenses that we would start to, based on this report, put into our operational budget. So you might see an increase in our operational budget under maintenance for whatever this report is details. And then that would absolutely count towards net school spending because it would be in the operational maintenance line item of the school budget as reported to Desi.
Thank you. I want to just stand for comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? Seeing none. Did you have one, Brian? Oh, okay. Seeing none, pro and con debate? Anybody have a pro and con debate? Mr. Holmes?
Brian Holmes, Precinct Three. I just raised questions about the dissenting members of the Finance Committee to understand the thought process about what's going on. Article 36 is a no-brainer for me. I'd ask town meeting to support it.
Okay, moving on. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Lurie?
David Lurie, Precinct Six, through you. The article would be paid for from the school's budget if we voted no. It's not a no vote against security for anybody. It isn't a no vote from that. Because even if we voted in the operating budget $100 million instead of $63 million, the schools have the authority to say, you know what, I don't want to spend $20,000 on a security audit. Let's go to town meeting and get it from somewhere else because $100 million, I still need it. In other words, they control all of that fund. We don't have the ability to break it down the way we do on the municipal side. We could pick, we could go right through and even make motions for lined items in the budget, but not on the school side. They get a lump sum of which any amount of money can be set aside for this, or they could choose not to set aside money for that. So when you say no, and they decide that school safety is important, they would find the money within their own budget to be able to buy this stuff. Okay? And that's why you should vote no.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next up, John Rock.
John Rock, Precinct Three. We have voted for plenty of other consultants throughout this process, and I haven't heard any objections saying, oh, why doesn't DPW fund this traffic study or this engineer? It's been that way since I've been coming to town meeting, which is quite a long time. So I haven't heard any objections to using articles to fund those, so I find it kind of odd that this is happening to the School Department. And I also want to comment that a quality and safe school system benefits residents of the whole town. It's a hallmark of a good town, and the safety of our kids is paramount, you know, of utmost importance to everybody in the town. So as the Superintendent stated, his department is the only one that's laying off people. So I think I strongly support this article, and I support the Superintendent of the School Committee 100%. Thank you.
Okay, now, next up, Scott Carrara.
I think we should all look at what we're doing here. We have passed these articles for the School Department. To me, they're serious, these ones here. I believe in Dr. Baito and what he's saying. I believe in Dr. Bieta and what he's saying. Why would we stop at this one where we just showed what the people want in this room for the residents? These are existing schools, they do need what, in my eyes, this needs to be done. Let's not waste any more time over 20 grand.
Thank you. Let's move on. Mr. Coleman?
Eric Coleman, precinct five, I move the previous question.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Eric Coleman to cut off debate, seconded by Scott Carrara. Okay, again, I'll ask for, these are two-thirds vote, and I'll ask for a voice vote on this. All right, all those in favor to cut off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous to cut off debate. Mr. Superintendent Bieta, would you like to do a quick summary?
Mr. Bieta, I would. I would, because I think one of the previous speakers spoke very eloquently to an issue that I think is before us. And that is the issue that the school articles have a number of people that are voting against them, and they have the right to do so. But at the same time, we're expending, rightfully so, capital expenses on the town side. We're just asking to be part of that process, and so that, to be quite honest, so that long-term, we have better planning, both financially and safety, for the district. That's the goal behind all of this. Nothing else, nothing more, and of course, to make sure that our children and our folks that work for you and here in town are safe. Thank you, and thank you to the membership.
Thank you, Dr. Bieta. All right, now we're ready to vote. This is the main motion as amended that appears on the screen before you. Please vote now. Simple majority. Article 36, school safety passes, 101 yes, 12 no, 1 abstentions. Article 36, school safety passes, 101 yes, 12 no, 1 abstentions.
Mr. Moderator, if you will, personal privilege, just to thank the body for recognizing the needs and the support of the budget, and we continue to want to be part of this wonderful community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bieta. All right, moving on, we took Article 37 back on May 20th, so let's do Article 38. Renovation of Town on Barn on West Street, that appears on page 62 in the warrant books, page 62. This is again, an amended motion with a sunset clause. So first, I ask the motion from Von Anokian, please.
That the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve account the sum of $230,000 to fund the renovation of the barn on the property at Assessors Map 37, Parcel 34.
Motion's been moved and seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted eight to four to recommend the motion for Article 38 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Operations Committee report.
Municipal Operations voted five to one to approve Article 38.
And could I have the Community Preservation Committee report?
Community Preservation Committee voted seven to zero, unanimous.
I think it says in the book, eight to zero?
Seven.
Seven to zero? We'll correct that. Seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, as I mentioned, this is amended motion, sunset clause.
Mr. Moderator-
John, you want to make the amended motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to add at the end, the same sentence that's been added previously, exempt from Article 70, from the annual town meeting of May 2023, the sunset bylaw.
Thank you. Motions are made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim Guerin. Okay, as I mentioned before, by voice vote, I see no one standing up to debate this or comment on this. So by voice vote, simple majority, all those in favor accepting this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, we're ready for the presentation. Mr. Kassler, could you identify yourself?
Thank you. This is Barry Kassler, I'm the program administrator for the Community Preservation Committee. At its town meeting in 2022, a vote has recommended funding and evaluation of the historic Hurley-Mackamara barn on West Street, and that evaluation was completed, and the consultant recommended the actions which we are now proposing tonight. The project was recommended unanimously by the CPC on December 6th, under the category of historic preservation. Here to present the project is Historic Commission Chair Dwight McCarron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kassler. Mr. Chairman, through you to everybody here, no matter how you vote on this, watching this on TV and just seeing the time that you people put in, night after night after night doing this, I mean, I really want to thank you as a citizen of the town who's not in the town meeting, just for all the work that you do on this, so, thank you. If we could have the next slide, that one really goes, that, this shows the location of the barn, which is on West Street. The red arrow that comes out of West Street near Ames Pond is a trail that goes in, that the barn is located right there. So when you drive down West Street after the turn, just before you get to Ames Pond on the right, the barn is in there on the left, somewhat shrouded by trees, but very close to the road. That also shows you how it's connected to the whole network of Bird Street Conservation Trails. This is a map that's just been upgraded, that shows the stone walls that are in there, shows the trails, and shows two-foot elevation. And I'd like to thank Jim Conlon and Larry Lang for the work they've done in putting this map together. And it really is a treasure, the Bird Street Conservation Area that we have there, and this barn, ramshackle as it may be, to me, is a treasure that we have to, at least in the short term, preserve. And if you go to the next slide, we'll see what kind of shape it's in. Well, that's actually, it just juxtaposes the map of the 25 divisions with the current Stoughton Street maps. For you history geeks, you come to Historical Society, or check our website, but if you want to see how our current streets match up with the old map, that gives you a view of it. Next slide, please. Now, there is the barn. The top picture shows the part that's collapsed, and is on the ground right there. That was the part that trucks could be driven in and put hay in the hay, large hay mow to the left. The barn to the left is very functioning, in good shape, it was built by the Hurleys in 1932. That's really the new part of the structure, and is in pretty solid shape. The roof is a little rough, as you see, and the work on the sides, the windows need some work, but while you're there, you can see the little cupola on top, which has a weathervein on it. That weathervein used to be much more extensive, but my understanding is that a helicopter came by in the 1960s when helicopters were stealing weatherveins, and that's one of the roofs that they stole a weathervein from. Little part of Stoughton history there. Next slide. The top one shows the south-facing part of the barn, which is really the most solid part. Underneath it, there's a basement, probably where the pigs were kept down below, but it was really the right-hand corner there, as good as it looks, it got my attention two years ago, when I could just see the foundation, which was otherwise solid, was starting to give way just a little in that right-hand corner. And that's part of the, part of the article is to work on that corner. The next slide is, shows you the road that goes to the fields out back. No, no, I wasn't asking for the next slide. And so, it's the six or seven acres of hay field that's out there, was really hay that needs to be cut, hay that under the right circumstances is worth, probably given the hay, the prices that they got last winter, probably $10,000 worth of hay could come out of that field with a little work. On the other hand, that does take labor, and that, the hay mow that I mentioned before, we're going to see in a minute, is a perfect place to store the bales, where Ed Mackamara stored them for many years. But I won't tell you that it's easy to work out a system where you have a farmer, where someone comes in and some combination of rendering his services and making profits from it. I mean, that's something that we may hear later from the Conservation Commission, that's something that's been attempted to do, but it's, it's not a simple process. But I encourage you, whether this passes or not, if you drive up to, right beside Maureen Gibbons' house, is a driveway with a gate, you park there, you can walk in, pass this barn, and these trails lead you to all the Bird Street Conservation Trails out back, and beautiful green fields, which have been mowed enough in the past year, so they are still hay fields. Hurleys grew corn there 50 years ago, but if the fields aren't cut, they will revert back to a nature as maybe two-thirds of the rest of the pasture back there has. Next slide, please. These pictures are both from the good side of the barn, where there've been animal pens, this part is fairly sound, you can see the beams there, milled beams, you know, cut in the 1930s, where Mr. Hurley, with the help of the Mackamaras, who actually had adopted and bought this barn, and built a much larger barn over the older one that was there. Next slide, please. That's the place where many, many hay bales could be stored. That part is fairly safe and sound, and is just waiting for someone to use it by putting hay bales in, or whatever else they want to store up at that upper level. When I was a kid, I pitched loose hay into a hay mow like that, but that's enough of my past. Now, this is the old barn. This is the 1808. You can see the hand-hewn beams there, which are in somewhat rough shape, but as far as we can tell, Jesse Gay built that smaller barn, actually, in 1808, and it functioned as a barn for him, for, well, for the Gays, for 120 years. When the Hurleys built their new barn, they built the whole modern end that you saw, and then just extended down over this part. This size was probably two-thirds the width of the current barn, they just went over the top of it. So that end of the barn contains a mixture of the new, the new addition, and the roof extends all the way across, and the old part, you can actually see, as you look down, the dark roof beams to the left show you where the old wood is in there. And also, in the lower picture, you can see the ancient lumber in there, a lot of it hand-hewn. Next picture? That, that's the part we're taking down. That's the, I mean, that one's coming down, that's the part of being demolished, they're giving a price of $25,000. That has a tree through the roof, that's the part right near the driveway when you come in. If that part is removed, it will actually make it possible to widen the driveway, so you'll actually be able to get two cars passing at that point to get back in there. That was where the milk trucks came to pick up the cans of milk that were put out for them. But that part is long gone, and it will be gone. Is that it? Is there one more? So, I, this is, the left-hand, the left-hand side of the barn is usable as is, animals could go in there, hay could be stored in there, that is a functioning barn, ready to go. The right-hand side is really a museum, as it stands, and were it, were it UC fit to support the barn, the Historical Society will put a farm museum in on that right-hand side. Because Stoughton has a long history of farming, certainly the dairy farms, the Hurleys, the Monks, and the Mackamaras, were the three big dairy farms in town in the 1930s and 1940s. And people have said, well, don't we have other ramshackle barns? Well, to contrast it with the Cape and Reynolds barn, the Cape and Reynolds were not serious farmers. Frank and Bertha were kind of gentlemen farmers for 20 years, and then they wanted to become scholars and benefactors of the town, and God bless them. This barn worked and worked and worked, from 1808 until probably when Ed retired from working in it, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. So this, this is a working barn, unlike the Cape and Reynolds barn, which was a nice barn, but this, this contains the history of the work that's been done in this town, when people did buy their milk from local people. So that's, the article, they were asking for a certain amount of money, and there are various things that are enumerated for it. I guess my bottom, I mean, I know this is, I know money is tight. I do know also that CPA, CPC funds were just increased by $1 million the other day when the second part of Hebrew Senior Life came off the table. So in terms of CPC funds, we won't say we have a surplus, but we have money right now that we didn't think we would a couple days ago. So to my view, this is a treasure of the town that needs some help right now, just to preserve it for a few years. You say, what are you going to do with it? Well, if it can be worked out so that farmers use it for community gardens, or to store hay back there, or even have animals in those pens that you see inside, fine, we would like to do that. The right-hand side is definitely worth being a farm museum, because I don't know of any other building in town built in 1808, hand-hewn beams, it was a working barn, and a barn for which we have the records of what it produced, let's say, in 1850. So, I ask you to, despite the fact that money is tight, make an investment in the future of the town, because like many things, once it's gone, it's gone. So this is a chance to save it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, time for technical questions.
Bob Kirby, precinct six.
Peter, do you, wait, here, I'm sorry, Mr. Kirby, did you have a technical question, Peter? Okay, Mr. Kirby, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the finance officer. How much money is available in the Community Preservation Fund post the Hebrew Senior Life proposal?
If I may?
Well, let's see if we get it from the financial director first.
Currently on the books, and the cash value is over $5 million on the CPC, and that's just the regular cash, and then articles that have previously been appropriated is over $3 million.
So there's ample funding for this project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other, okay, Pac Holburn?
I'm sorry, Pac Holburn, precinct four. I know this is down by the lesser, but I don't know exactly where, and I did read through the article, will this include funding for signage? I mean, I hear about all these great treasures in the town, but if you don't know where they are, you don't know where they are. So it would be nice if we had a sign and something for the public welcome, is that included in this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman? The, the next article is for 15 historic signs, 15 more signs that are going to be put up, one of which will be put here.
But will it be clear that it's open for the public? Because I wouldn't think to drive down some of these lanes, thinking that it was a public area.
Well, I cert, that's not under my control. I certainly think it's a good idea to have, have it open. Right now, there's a gate, but the gate's not locked. I think when we're, when we're more confident that the barn is not an attractive nuisance, that we fix it up a little, we'd feel more comfortable putting signs up to encourage people to go in there.
Thank you. I just want people to just keep that in mind, I hear about the treasures, and I just personally don't know where they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jim Guerin?
Jim Guerin, precinct six. I went down and looked at this thing here, it's pretty decrepit, I think, but beside that, when I read the presentation, or the proposal for this thing here, there's a lot of references to doing minimal construction, minimal repair, I'm sorry, minimal repair to stabilize. Now, this makes it sound like you're Mickey Mouse-ing something to, so it doesn't fall down, and so somebody goes in there. I'm troubled by that. The other thing that I, I really don't like with this thing here is that we are talking about this, this is CPC money. Well, it's not. 15% of it might be CPC money, the other 85% is my tax money. So, please don't present it as something it is, it is not. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else technical questions? Seeing none, we're going to move into pro and con debate. Anybody, okay, Mr. Peter Vintresco, please.
Peter Vintresco, precinct eight. I went to this barn, and I looked it over good. And the original barn wasn't really built to be a working barn, it was a farm. It's like today, you have a garage to park your car. These here were made for hoss, and to put the carriage in there. These here were made for horses and to put the carriage in there. That was their transportation. And they might have kept some hay in there to feed the horses and some grain and straw for bedding. I never seen any signs of any kind of, there would have been cows in there years ago. And my observation on picture one, I don't know if you can read that? Okay, outside view of the original barn is 28 feet wide. There was nothing here worth saving, but termites left because there was nothing left for them to eat. Now, in picture two, we have picture two? If you look at it, the main column standing upright, there's a lot of deterioration there that's caused by termites. The beam that's laying on a 45-degree angle is termite eaten, and it fell down, attached to the back wall because the termites, it wasn't rotted, the termites did it. So it's in pretty bad shape. And, okay, photo three, you can see that's all damaged by termites. And we'll go to photo three. Photos three, inside the original barn, you can see it's a mess. Everything's collapsed. And this all collapsed because termites, carpenter ants. And on photo six, that's the little addition they had, which the gentleman over there says they're going to tear down. That's on the right-hand side of the original barn. And if we go to photo seven, again, it's another picture of inside the original barn. As you can see, it's severe damage on the columns by the termites. On eight, okay, this is a photo inside of the newer portion of the barn. You can tell it's a newer portion because the frame is completely different than the original. The original barn, the joists would be notched into the beam. This type of construction started around 1915. So this part of the barn's not really historical, so I don't know why we're trying to save that part. And if you look at photo nine, this here is the left side of the newer portion of the barn. The corner posts and still are rotted out, which is why the corner wall is pulling away from the building and sinking. Now, that's the new barn. And the last picture is number 10.
Mr. Vintresco, excuse me, Peter, time's up.
All right, but you can see.
Time's up. Okay.
Can you give me one more minute, please?
Thirty seconds.
All right. This barn is not a good investment. There's nothing there in the original barn to save. You'd have to start the whole thing, ground up, over, period. And if this was some kind of a business investment, it'd be a waste of money. So my recommendation is, from my experience with buildings and stuff like that, it's not worth saving. Don't spend the money.
Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on. This is pro and con debate. Mr. McDonald?
Jerry McDonald, precinct four, chairman of the Conservation Commission. I just had a couple comments. This proposal for renovating the barn is, the barn is under the Care-Custody Control of the Select Board. They own the land the barn sits on. And Conservation Commission owns the land behind it, including the field that was referenced. And the Conservation Commission has voted, a number of times in the last few years, to endorse the idea of farming or using the land that's behind the parcel for some type of agricultural use, whether that's victory gardens or leasing it out. So I just wanted the board, the group to know that the parcel and questions under the Select Board's Care-Custody Control and that the Conservation Commission has endorsed agriculture in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Collins.
This is a pro and con.
Pro and con.
Okay, con. Check ons, precinct one. This is a waste of money. If anybody's been up on West Street, see that barn? There's no way that $200,000, $30,000 is going to do anything to fix that barn. And then they talk about it might be a museum. It might be farm tractors. Where are you going to get farm tractors? You're going to buy from the same people that sold you the land to begin with. So this is a waste of money. It's going to cost us more in the long term to get this building the way they want it, as a museum, or put the animals in there. Who's going to give you animals? You're going to get a couple goats from Robin Grim?
I said it was sorry.
All right, anybody else pro and con debate? Seeing, okay, we're ready for the vote. Just make sure I can put it up.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Oh, yeah, I can ask you for a quick summary.
Well, just to Mr. Vintresco's point, certainly those beams are damaged, but I've never seen sign of termite or carpenter ant damage in there. There's other, just general deterioration of rot. But, you know, respecting his opinion, I haven't seen carpenter ant damage there. But that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to the vote.
I'd like to answer that question, please. He didn't see any.
No, no, excuse me.
He didn't see termites or ants because there's nothing there for them to eat. That's why there's nothing there.
Please sit down. Thank you very much. Okay, let's not have a back-and-forth debate here. We're going to go to the vote, simple majority. Is it up on the screen? Are we ready to vote? Please vote one, two, or three. Article 38, renovation of Town Hall Barn on West Street fails. Forty-seven yes, sixty no, three abstentions. Thank you for voting. Moving on, article 39, historic signage. This again, I should say it's on page 63 of your warrant books, page 63. And I just want to caution the body, we do have an amended motion with the sunset clause again on this particular article. All right, at this point in time, can I ask Juan Anokian to read the motion?
That the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund historic preservation account the sum of $17,000 for the purchase and installation of 15 historic sign, site signs in Stoughton.
Second, moved in second by John Anzamino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted 12 to 0 to recommend the motion for article 39, as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Municipal Operations, please.
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 1 to approve article 39.
Thank you. Can I have the Community Preservation Committee report?
Community Preservation Committee voted 7 to 0 to support this.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lanahan. Okay, this is the amended, we have to have an amended motion. Mr. Lanahan, you going to read the amended motion?
Yes, as with the previous article, it is the same motion with an additional sentence at the end exempt from Article 70, the annual town meeting, May 2023, sunset by law.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Jim Guerin. Okay, again, by voice vote to accept this amendment. I see no one rising to debate it. All those in favor, by voice vote, simple majority, say aye. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you all for voting. Just give me one second here. All right, presentation, Mr. Kessler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Kessler, program administrator for the Community Preservation Committee. The Stoughton Historical Commission installed a number of historic site signs around Stoughton under a previous grant. And these signs, many of which you have undoubtedly seen, are in places like in front of Town Hall, at the Old Waterworks Building, at the Lucius Clapp Memorial Building, and other locations. This year, the Historical Commission would like to install signs at Stoughton's historic cemeteries and a number of other places around town as a successful follow-up to the initial project. This project was recommended unanimously by the CPC on December 6th under the category Historic Preservation. Here to present the project is Historical Commission Chair Dwight McCarron.
Thank you, Barry. I hope you people have seen some of these signs around town. I think they add to the class and the history of the town. We will add them to all of our cemeteries, the railroad station, the old fire station, one at Atkinson Avenue, the site of the railroad where it crosses there at Stoughton Junction, probably one at the site of the barn that you've seen, and in several other places. So you get my free labor putting these signs together, but it's a labor of love, so if you come up with a few dollars to pay for them, I'll try and do my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight, for your presentation. Time for technical questions? Anybody for technical questions? I'm seeing no one rise, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you. Arnie Feinberg, precinct six. To a previous person who stated that it'd be nice if we had something on the sign that said it was for public access, can that be added?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. These signs are really noting historical phenomena. They're really not about public access or not. So this particular grant, what I would add is a map finally done that will show you the locations of all 40 signs by the time we're done. But it was not saying public access is not part of what we're doing here. And these signs are not about public access, they're about history.
But if people were to stroll.
Is this your second question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
People were to stroll through these cemeteries, how do they know that it isn't private property, that they should be going through this? An owner of a particular piece of property may not want people walking on it.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Well, all of these signs are on public property. Most of them are right beside the road, like there's one right outside of Town Hall on the lawn beside the flagpole. So they're all in publicly accessible spots. There are a couple inside of Bird Street Conservation Area, near the old cellar hole and to the side. But they are in places that it's already apparently known for public access. So all I can say is the purpose of these signs is not to talk about public access. Let's talk about the history once you access it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you both. Next up, Mr. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, John Perry, precinct three. So through you, Mr. Moderator, to the presenter of the article. Is it possible for you, I know you had mentioned a map perhaps? It'd be a great idea to have kind of a walking map or a map with each of these signs indicating the location, perhaps something that's posted on the Historical Society's website, or perhaps Parks and Recreation website might have something available as well, just to get some more activity and some more interest into the valuable assets that the town has and the historic perspective that you present.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, I agree. It's just a question whether I'm putting that at the top of the list or the bottom of the list. But it will be done along with this project.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Laurie?
My next, or, go for it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you here.
That's all right.
You want to let Mr. Laurie go first?
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So David Laurie, precinct six, through you. I think I have a technical question based on the concerns of previous speakers. So who owns the property? Like, is it Conservation Commission land that all of these are on? Is it sometimes that it's strictly just public property that the municipality is in charge of? Who's in charge of the property at each of those locations?
Mr. Chairman, through you. It's town conservation land or the cemeteries. Now, the cemeteries are semi, I mean, public access, but they're owned by a separate corporation. Certainly, we put one in Dry Pond Cemetery, going to, they were very agreeable to it. Everything else is like, is in front of the railroad station, in front of the fire station. So it will all be public property except for the cemeteries, which are semi-public.
Okay, so I guess through you, Mr. Moderator, is to understand, because I think there's a big difference between what this article's about, and that has to do with describing the phenomenon as the petitioner's talking about, and making sure that people, when they go by one of these places, they actually know that it's a public space that they could come and visit. It's welcoming, it says, "Come on in," you know? So I think that's kind of where the gap is, because people are thinking, "Oh, it's going to be a sign to tell people, 'I can pull in with my family.'" I'm just wondering whether or not there's a different entity that should be, other than the petitioner now, is there a different entity that would be in charge of making it so it was clear that, "Hey, come on in, this is, we hope you enjoy the space," you know?
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, precinct two, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the presenter. This information that you're gathering, first of all, thanks for doing all this work. I can only imagine how much work went into it. Is this information that will be or could be shared with the 300-year anniversary committee?
Yes, in fact, I've discussed with Joanne Callanan, who's a member of our group, that we hope to have, we plan to have, actually, not only these signs done, but the map and probably a tour to all or most of the signs as part of the 300.
Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is John Rosenblatt.
Yes, John Rosenblatt, precinct seven. I just want to say thank you for the work you've done also. And I also think that this is a really good thing. It's a small amount of money, and we're losing history throughout our whole country, especially in the state. And we are, this is, our state, Massachusetts, is really the predecessor for every other state in the Union. So if we've got markers, I think it's wonderful to be promoting history, and it's a small amount of money, I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Paul Bellevue.
Paul Bellevue, precinct three. Do you ever think of putting scan codes on all these signs?
That, you mean those things you click on and it tells you something on your app? It sounds like a good idea, but it does exceed my ability to do that.
Is that a yes or a no?
How did he phrase the question? I really, are we going to do it? Right now, it's not, none of the other signs have that little thing on it. And as far as I know, these QRs.
Okay.
Maybe if someone, you know, educates me, it can be done fairly simply. It can happen, but it's not in my wheelhouse right now.
All right, thank you very much, Dwight. We're going to move on. Next up is Becca Marksen. No? No other questions? Peter, do you have a, nope. Come, okay, we're going to go right into pro and con debate. Who's up first? Becca, please. Prefer to Pete? No, she can't move the question. Okay, Peter, why don't you go?
Peter Vintresco, precinct eight. I've got a surprise, Mr. McGarrett, over there. I am completely in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, Becca?
Becca Marksen, precinct seven, move the question.
All right, thank you, Becca. Is there a second? Who is who's second? Scott Carrara, just had it for the record, had a second. Give me a moment here. All right, that's a cutoff debate. We need a two-thirds majority by voice vote. All those in favor of the cutoff debate? Please say aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. All right, cutoff debate. All right, that ends the debate. Dwight, would you like to do a quick summary?
No, thanks. I think we've said it all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that summary. Appreciate that. We're ready to vote. This is going to be a simple majority. Are we ready? Please vote now, one, two, or three. Okay, Article 39 historic signage, Group 2 passes, 98 yes, 10 no, 0 abstentions. Thank you for voting, let's move on.
Thank you.
All right, we're at Article 40, 40, Stoughton Youth Baseball Field Improvements, that appears on page 64 in the warrant books. All right, I just want to caution the body, we have another amended motion with the sunset clause. I got to ask for the motion by Juan Anokian, please.
That the town vote to cancel authorization for the expenditure of $145,000 for lighting at Miller Field and scoreboard replacements at Garfield and O'Day Field approved under Article 30 at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting and pursuant to general law chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, undesignated fund balance to sum of $241,000 for improvements at the Elm Street Complex, including new fences and protective padding, double renovations, walkway repairs, 3 new scoreboards and related electrical work, and other miscellaneous repairs and enhancements.
Seconded by Elliot Hansen, was it Joe or Elliot?
Sounded like Joe.
Elliot, I'm sorry, it sounded very familiar. I'll take the second from Elliot Hansen. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted 12 to 0 to recommend the motion for Article 40 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Relations Committee report.
Intergovernmental Relations voted 6 to 0 to recommend Article 40 to town meeting.
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee report.
The Community Preservation Committee voted 7 to 0 on May 14th to support the motion.
Thank you very much. Can I have, John, can I have the amended motion, please?
Yes, same motion as with the previous, adding a last sentence saying exempt from Article 70, annual town meeting, May 2023, sunset by law.
Second, seconded by Elliot Hansen. Just one moment, please. Okay, Mr. Kessler, can we have the presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Barry Kessler, CPC Program Administrator. Stoughton Youth Baseball, under the previous year's officers...
I'm sorry, did I not accept the amendment? Small technicality, but I will go ahead and...
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Let me start again.
Yeah, let me just, I have to accept the amendment, Barry, first. I jumped ahead, just trying to move this convention along here. All right, to accept the amendment as motion by John Lanahan, by voice vote, simple majority, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous, and thank you all for keeping me honest there, you know? Okay, Mr. Barry Kessler, please.
All right, thank you again, Barry Kessler, CPC Program Administrator. Stoughton Youth Baseball, under the previous year's officers, presented us with a project request last year for lighting and scoreboards at the Elm Street Complex, and that project was approved last year's town meeting. Unfortunately, the project could not be completed due to unforeseen wetlands issues and other issues. This year, under new leadership, which includes someone who in his, let's say, in his daytime job is a professional project manager and is a, one of the, will be one of the presenters tonight who you'll hear from, Stoughton Youth Baseball is proposing a slightly different project, which would include the funds that were allocated last year, which would be canceled as part of this year's article so that they can be used for this year's article, and they'll be applied towards a broader renovation of the Elm Street Complex, which will be focused on improving the fences, the walkways, and the other infrastructure on Elm Street, including new scoreboards for 3 playing fields. This project was, try that again, this project was recommended unanimously by the CPC under the category of recreation, so here to present this project are Stoughton Youth Baseball's President Heather Trokey and Vice President Steve Barton.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for giving us the time this evening, we very much appreciate it. On behalf of the organization, I am going to be brief, just because I'm aware of time, and we're so very, very much appreciative of all you do for the town, so thank you. So to Mr. Kessler's point, we stood before you last year requesting the funds, you all very graciously voted in favor, and we were made aware as we started the project that unfortunately there were some wetlands issues that we weren't previously privy to, and so, you know, the board came back and thought, how can we leverage these funds in a different way to best support the organization? The board did vote in support of having Steve Barton, who stands beside me, to represent sort of what this project could look like and the scope and sequence, and so engaging with Steve, we really came up with a more comprehensive plan that better suits the needs of the league. As you all know, the VFW Memorial Fields has existed for quite a bit of time, the organization is now over 70 years old, and the league is in some repair, and so we're looking forward to your yes vote this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Steve, so he can give you a little bit more details about the project. Thank you.
Great, thank you, good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, I do recognize a few of you, my name is Stephen Barton, I live at 15 Mahoney Avenue, Stoughton. In Stoughton Youth Baseball, I am on the board. In my private life, I also am, I have a progressive experience through facilities, I started off in the trades, and I worked my way through, and I worked for a major commercial real estate company as a facilities director and sourcing director. Just so that we know a little bit about my background, when we came over and we took this grant on, can we go to the next slide? We really wanted to take a look at the fields and really make it about a community impact, and it wasn't just about making a better and safe place for the, quote unquote, baseball. I moved to Stoughton 7 and 1/2, 8 years ago, I'm coming up on my 8th year anniversary, and I couldn't be more happy. I have 3 kids in the town, I have a 12-year-old, I have a 10-year-old, I have a 7-year-old, so I have a 6th, a 5th, and I have a first grader in the community, and we couldn't ask for a better experience, my wife Laura and I, and we've met some of the best people that we've met, and now we call friends and we consider family, down at those baseball fields. And it's, and it's more than that, you know, my sons, they play, there's kids that are down there that are the drama kids, the band kids, it's not just the baseball kids, it's truly community, we're down there. Tonight, I was down there, I was helping assistant coach, one of the father's son had, needed to have surgery, so I stepped up on a non-night. We have kids that are no longer playing sports, and I see them helping out in the snack shack because, you know, now that they've graded out, they still want to be a part of this thing, and they want to help out. So it's not just about baseball, it is giving a sense of community, and it's about being prideful, I know there were some other articles, but not to kind of go into it, the pride that we see down there, the volunteerism that we have from the parents, that we have from the kids, it's really a sense of community. We've been an organization 71 years now, Heather, and we've never had a shot of influence that we need help in regards to the safety. What I want to get in on that is, we talked about how we gave some of the money back when we looked at the lighting project. Can we go to the next slide? I want to just make sure, yeah, so what we wanted to look at is, how do we make this thing accessible for everybody? And one of the things, when you go down to the baseball field, whether it's our field or any fields, the top of a fence, it's very sharp, whether you have the fence at your house or you have it at a field, kids get cut all the time. We went to the, to stop the cutting 10, it had to have been over 10 years ago, the fencing's all 50, 60 years old, it's been painted, we've really tried, we have tie wraps, I mean, the amount of volunteerism that would go into it, it's just, it's in need. And when I get back to the top of the fence, we have corrugated pipe, it's just not the right application. Kids, adults, anyone who go down there can definitely get cut from it, so instead of looking at it from the likes perspective, we're like, hey, let's take and see if we could scale the project back a little bit, but up a little bit, and just look at the safety. We have fencing, and instead of doing all the fields, we wanted to kind of show the proof of concept, and we picked one fence, and that's our show field where we do a lot of our presentations, we hold like our championship round in, and then we're going to take that other fence that we tear down, and we're going to fix and reestablish some of those other fields. Again, they're just in need, there's only so many zip ties and so many volunteer hours are, we need some help, you know, it's just at that point, we are all volunteers. Again, I reference my day job, but there's times where there's some weeks I'm putting 10, 20 hours a week, and that's just not me, there's plenty of people, there's a whole tribe of us, there's adults that are putting a lot more time than just even me. And then, if you go down there, there's just a lot of divots, there's a lot of potholes, and that's why we wanted to really look at the hard pack and really make it just a safe place for people to walk, for, whether you're wheelchair, you're not wheelchair, just to be able to walk, there's a lot of divots and potholes, you pull in, you know, the cars are getting slammed because we have a lot of pothole damage that we need, and then the scoreboards, if anything, if you go down there, we, Heather and her, Heather's husband, myself, and some other, we've really tried to make the scoreboards workable, but they're 30, 40 years old, and the vendor that we've been working with laughs at us, but we try our hardest, we've called in sick, we've gone down those fields, and we've put in extra hours down there, and again, it's just at the point now where we just, the kids need it, and it's, you know, it would be great if we could have the working scoreboards. As you can see, we have 8 fields, but we didn't go and say, okay, hey, we need 8 new scoreboards, we thought 3 would be, you know, like the give and take, so instead of asking for 8, and then we get at 4, we were like, you know what, honestly, we need 3, and I thought that was like a fair number. And then, just so that we have basis of all the numbers that we did, we did work with vendors, I know we'll have, if we were elected to, if you gave us the opportunity to move this forward, we know there'd be more of a process, but we really wanted to make this number as tight as possible in front of you people tonight, and we did go out and we did get some bids, we did do, you know, our due diligence in regards to putting these numbers together, we didn't just take one high number and then hopefully we'll come under. I feel confident that these numbers are, you know, are very good numbers. And then the dugouts, as you guys know, or if you don't know, the dugouts are a safety item, we need the kids to be in there, there's just some, there's some cosmetic, and then there is some minor structural repair that we just, again, we need. It's not a matter of can the moms and the dads go down there and fix it, we need a professional to go down there and just get it done, because if we go and take our hours and work on one thing, we can't then be working on the 75 other things. So again, we really need the help, it's 100% volunteer, I don't want to not, but it's just the amount of volunteer hours, we need help, you know, we need help, but, you know, we'd be very thankful and proudful if we could, if we could make that happen.
I just want to add one, just one point around the walkways, one of the things that we did consider was the ADA accessibility down there specifically for, you know, our folks coming in to visit, and we want to make sure that everyone can access and watch the fields and watch their players or their family members, so that was another piece to this that we thought was really important.
Thank you. Next slide. This is just again, if you look at this slide, these are not all kids that are playing baseball, we have some old kids, some young kids, the kid driving summers, he's about to graduate high school, he's going to be going to Roger Williams, he's been through our program, so, you know, these kids, it's not just about baseball, it's a sense of community. This pitcher was last year's summer tournament, he was coming back volunteering, and now he's going to Roger Williams to represent Stoughton, right? This place was a sense of community forum, he had so much fun playing T-ball and going through our program, he's still giving back, and you can see all those kids thinks he's the cool guy because he's like their, you know, their big brother to him, and the sense of community that you get out of that has nothing to do with baseball. Next slide. And again, that's my daughter, so yeah, absolutely put her up there. That's Emily. Next slide. This is our representative, every year, just so you guys know, we do have a big full reception, we get as many people involved, and we've had the chief, we've had to throw out the first pitch, we try to make it as, you know, community related. Next slide.
Excuse me, time is up?
Not a problem, thank you, we appreciate you giving us this time.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to have some questions.
Okay.
Any technical questions? Seeing none. Prone con debate? Seeing none. All right, you want to do a quick summary?
No.
No, I think...
Very good choice, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, okay. This is simple majority, are we ready for the vote? Okay, please vote now, 1, 2, or 3.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Article 40 passes, 100 yes, 5 no, 2 abstentions, I declare that a vote.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Anokian.
I moved that we adjourned this evening and reconvene next Wednesday at 7 o'clock.
So next Wednesday, May 29th, at 7 o'clock. All those, okay, moved in, is there a second?
My second.
Carolyn Campbell seconded that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Everybody have a safe holiday weekend, see you Wednesday, May 29th.